Awesome. Good morning, everyone. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's Open Meeting Law in Section 101.021 of the Codified Ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the Participants Panel on the desktop and mobile version and activate it by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the Chair or facilitator to recognize you recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. Calling users can unmute by using star six. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter via our website and email have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Thank you very much. We're moving the public art piece to the end of the agenda, so we're going to start off with page eight. And I ask the people presenting today to keep your comments brief because I have to leave at 11:30 and turn it over to Lillian Curry, and she has to leave at noon. So we want to make sure that we keep a quorum throughout the whole meeting and can conduct all the business on our agenda today. So, Michael, please call the roll.
Mr. Chair, it's Lillian. August Lueker does not have the correct link, and he texted me that he's trying to log on, and if someone can resend him the link.
I'm in.
Oh, there he is.
Thanks, August. Thanks, Lillian. So, Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Present.
Downing.
Present.
Lueker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Paul. Slime.
Present.
We have a quorum. The first is a lot consolidated, lot split, permanent parcel number 00701071. 4210 Orchard Avenue. Now, this one was tabled on June 4th. Do we have enough information to take action today? Staff?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to remove from the table.
Matthew Moss has his hand raised.
We have a motion and second. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing. Lueker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, who's here to present this?
Matthew Moss does have his hand raised.
Go ahead, Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After the last meeting in June, the the Commission gave specific direction to the applicant as to how to split this lot and where to set the property lines. And the applicant, Mr. Jeff Snackey, has done so and provided us with the following presentation in lot split diagram. So I believe it's been a little while since I've seen this, but I believe it now has lots, the line, the split line drawn. So there's a 10-foot setback for the church, oh, for the house. And the church has the remaining setback of the difference of the property, which is a little under three feet. Because if I recall correctly, the total distance between the structures is 12 feet. But this was deemed appropriate in consultation with Billion Housing since the rear wall of that church is entirely brick and doesn't have any windows, so it does not pose a fire concern from that perspective. So this was based on, this was done by by Mr. Snackey based on the feedback from the Commission and from the Billion Housing Department.
Mauricio, I want to go back to the one that says revised. There's a slide that says revised. It's a it's a site plan look. Back further.
Wasn't it?
No, keep going back.
Yeah, that is the revised plot.
Yeah, there's one that says revised on it, too. It's, anyway, it's one of these two. Matt?
I'm having, I'm hearing.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
There it is.
That's the revised plot, yeah. Previously, the applicant had split, was proposing to split the, split the, that space between the house and the church down the middle. And that has been revised to provide a 10-foot setback for the the small house, parcel B, and the remaining setback will be for the church. But because there are windows on that side of the house, it was deemed appropriate to give that as much space as possible, just so it can be as compliant as possible with the city's fire code.
Thank you. Commission members' questions?
I move approval. Downing.
Second, Lueker.
Motion and second, further discussion?
Yes, I would like to to amend the the motion to stipulate that the property owner identify through, you know, what, through the Building Department, what the actual fire rating of the church wall can achieve through through, I believe, Chapter 7, which identifies historic materials. I just want to make sure that that everybody addresses the the construction of this church properly when developing this project.
Okay, we have a motion and second.
I'll accept my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Yes.
Lueker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Slime.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Next is permanent parcel number 00330096097 and 120. This is at 4005 and 4009 Woodbane Avenue and 3914 John Avenue. Who's here for this?
I am. The owner of 4005 Woodbane.
Okay, your name, please, for the record?
John Neinaber.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So the the property behind my house of 4005 3914 John Avenue was purchased in June 2021 between me and my neighbor on 4009, so they're directly next to it. So we want to split the lot between the two of us and consolidate it into our properties. But next. And then here's the proposed view of the the actual survey that we had done with it and what our planned split is. Next. This would give a bigger backyard to my house, so it'd be 14 feet wide onto John and then 18 feet onto for 4009 additional. So this would flare out the backyard for 4009, so give them a bigger backyard, and then also, same with us, give a bigger backyard. Just an aerial shot of it taken by the realtor. Next one. Then another aerial shot. Another, and then a backyard shot. What you can see from all the shots is that the yards are very connected to each other, very close to one another. So we actually bought this property just so that we didn't see another house be bought, built right on top of our property lines. Next. Site plan. Both of us plan on using this more as just a green space. So my property, mine is just to move the shed that was on my property and then plant eight fruit trees. And then 4009 Woodbane was planning on moving their, all their flower gardens along the property line. So this would be a little bit more enjoyable than the overgrown grass lot that has previously been there, and normally it got up to like a foot or so. Next. Any questions?
Commission members?
Move approval. Downing.
Second, Curry.
Motion and second, further discussion? Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lueker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Slime.
Yes.
Motion carries. Permanent parcel number 00110074. This is for 9803 and 9805 Lake Avenue. Who's here? Who's here for this one?
I'm here, David.
Hey, Wes.
Morning.
Morning. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Wes Harper with Horton Harper Architects. We were here a handful of months ago to present the overall development or redevelopment of these cluster of parcels on Lake Avenue between West Boulevard and Clifton. You can see here, we're just south of Edgewater Park with the, some views of the lake. Let's switch to the next slide. And so the the site we're talking about specifically today is the eastern existing parcel. This parcel has a large, what was originally designed as a duplex house. And over the years, it's been broken up into one singular home. It was previously a bed and breakfast over the last 10 or 15 years and has been vacant for the past decade, probably. The parcel to the west, we're kind of going through a redesign in terms of what we're proposing there. We previously had a six-story condominium structure there that will, we're not going to be proposing that to townhomes, and that will be a separate presentation to the planning commission. So today, we're just looking at the eastern parcel. Next. Yeah, so here is the Google aerial of the existing site. Got the empty parcel to the west and then the rehab that we're looking at today. To the east of us, we have a mix of existing, you know, larger homes on Lake Avenue and then the Andrew Brickman Project a bit further to the east. To our west, we have a 1920s large multifamily apartment structure with parking below. Next. Here, we just have some existing condition photos of the house. It's actually in pretty good shape considering it's been vacant for a handful of years. We do plan on fully rehabbing this home. We'll get to a rendering or two at the end of this presentation or maybe the next slide, I don't recall. But the idea is to basically put this house back to a two-family structure. And since, you know, we recognize that in some ways we're recreating a building department issue by splitting the existing house into two parcels, basically. So this can be a fee simple transaction to the future buyers. But the the structure is actually split already by a a large masonry wall that's 12 to 14 inches thick that kind of snakes around the, within the footprint of the home. So over the years, as I mentioned, you know, those two homes became one single structure. We're going to be re-implementing or rebuilding a two-hour rated wall within the voids of the fire-rated structure as it currently exists. I know it's something that the planning commission doesn't like to create. You know, these these fire-rated problems that maybe aren't recognized at the time that somebody's bringing a lot split to you. But here we are, you know, fully aware of what we're getting into. I just wanted to explain that portion of the lot split. So with that, I think we can switch to the next slide. Here is the site plan. So this parcel would be split into two and basically trace the the firewall that currently exists. You could see it kind of jogs its way through the house as it heads to the south, and then we're looking to create a new four-car garage in the rear. Again, there would be a two-hour firewall on that property line so that the building or the you know, the fire code, the building code is considered and in meeting that code. So it's a pretty unique lot split. You know, we we think that this, you know, the efforts to do this are are worth it. There's been a handful of proposals to this house over the years, most of which were to demolish the house. And so we're looking to rehab this and and re-energize the space. Next. So here is a rendering of the rehabilitated home. We'd look to remove some of the infill that has been constructed over the years in the porches so that will completely open that up, but still be a usable porch and have some privacy from one side to the next, basically. Down the middle between the home and the structure that you see to the right would be a a path that basically acts as the pedestrian entry to the future townhomes that would be to the to the west there. So we will be coming back within the coming months to get the townhouse project approved. But it would meet all of the the criteria of the townhouse code. Next. So here is the basement floor plan. We could go through this very quickly. You could see, you know, down the middle, we have that very thick masonry wall that divides the two parcels essentially. Next. Here we have the first floor layout. Again, that that masonry demising wall is consistent all the way up to the bottom of the roof. With that, I mean, I don't think there's really much else to to get into. The second floor plan would have infill in the holes that were created in the the demising wall to connect the two units. So with that, I'd open it up to questions.
Commission members?
I move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I was muted. They have Director Collier had his hand raised.
Yeah. Yeah, just one quick question for clarity's sake. Obviously, this is creative. We thought the design was great. But the question is, Wesley, just so unclear. Was this previously a two-family that went single and it's being converted back? Did I hear that correctly?
From the way the the masonry wall was created, it looks like it was two separate units at one point. There would have been no other reason to really build such a hefty and significant masonry wall. And the interesting thing is, when you click on the parcel on the auditorium site, it gives it two addresses. So I think over the years, it just kind of morphed into a single home as the bed and breakfast. I'm not sure when it actually occurred, but the bed and breakfast certainly utilized those kind of pass-throughs between the units to make their life easier, I'm sure. But in terms of documentation of whether or not it truly was two separate parcels, I do not have that information.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lueker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Slime.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next is permanent parcel number 11406050 and 051. This is at 17704 Indle Side Road. Who's here for this one, please?
I am.
Who's I am?
John Prem.
Oh, John, go ahead.
Yeah, basically, what ended up happening was a house was demolished in 2019, and it left this space open. And basically, all we're trying to do now is reestablish the property line there with the lot split. It's a very small to line it up. As you can see here, and it's correcting a previous survey that had a system error on it. And everything's pretty much done. All I'm trying to do now is finish up approval so we can move forward, and then I can install property line. If you'd like to move to the next slide. And there we go. So I already have a fence there and what have you. And when the house was torn down, it left a big open space. So now what I have to do is go ahead and make sure everything's squared away so I can go ahead and get a new permit fence and finish it all the way to the back of the property. And a couple more ground photos. And surveys are even done, and there's the replat for it. And that's pretty much it.
Commission members?
Move approval. Downing.
Second, Lueker.
We have a motion and second. Further discussion? Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lueker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Slime.
Motion carries, and we have one descending vote. Next is a mandatory referral. Ordinance number 228-2021. Authorizing the Director of Economic Development to lease certain properties located at the Opportunity Corridor Super Black 3B to Norstrom Development and Construction LLC, where it's designated, not to exceed three years. Authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into a purchase agreement with Norstrom. And this is from the land reutilization. Who's here to speak to this one?
Good morning, Director Ebersole's here.
Hi, David.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So we're talking today about a lease-to-own relationship that we are proposing to enter into with the development team behind the Construction Opportunity Institute of Cleveland. This would result in the development of a construction training facility located, as you can see, just south of the Opportunity Corridor and east of East 79th Street. I'll turn it over to the project team to talk about it in a little bit more detail here, but the purpose of the lease would be to allow the development team to get into the site to undertake the environmental remediation in partnership with us and with Jobs Ohio and to do the pre-development work necessary to bring out the site. Once the project is ready to come out of the ground, we would then allow them to activate the purchase agreement, purchase the property, own and develop the site. This is a an interesting site, a great location. Tucked up to the to the north there is the existing Perk McTack Construction Building. This facility here would focus on training folks from the neighborhood, especially younger people, people coming out of school and getting them jobs in the construction trade. It would be a hands-on learning experience run by a group led by by Fred Perkins, who owns the land to the to the north there and has decades of experience in the construction trades. Ultimately, if once training facility proves success, there would be additional expansion for onsite living and some facilities to support the training, the training mission itself. Again, I think one of the, one of the feedbacks that we've, we've received and one of our goals in development of the Opportunity Corridor has been ensuring that the individuals who are impacted by the, by the development of the corridor, the individuals in the neighborhood get the opportunities to get jobs, to develop their, develop that workforce in and around the corridor. And so our view is that this fits that mission. Fits that mission pretty well. So Eugene Cranford is here, and he's the project architect, and I'm going to have him talk a little bit about the the project and the rendering that you see here.
Morning.
Morning, Eugene.
How you guys doing?
Good.
Um, just real briefly, I want to go through our, our project. Our project's actually located, site location is east of 79th. East 79th Street with Woodland being to the north, Kinsman Avenue being to the south. The property of the proposed TOIC campus is bordered between Rollins to the north and Holton to the south at East 79th Street and East 84th Street. What we are proposing is a it's a 48,000 square foot building. The proposed training facility would would get at, would would be located southwest corner of East 79th Street and Rollins across from the proposed entry exit ramp for the Opportunity Corridor project. The proposed main entrance will be part, will be at the southeast corner of East 79th and Holton. As you know, along East 79th Street, there's not been much new development. It's pretty blighted area between Woodland and Kinsman. The only new type of construction or anything done there has been the RCA station at East 79th Street, which is a beautiful station. We've also, RCA has also, RCA has also placed several bus stops within that vicinity and strip, which would be great for the students of this proposed training building. Before the determining the building location, the team looked at the City of Cleveland Transportation for Livable Community Initiative plan, and we will adhere to that, to those city requirements and such as amenity strips, building, building lighting, parking lighting, pedestrian lighting, as well as different types of trees, landscaping and fencing requests and requirements. We will pretty, pretty much be setting the precedents in this area because nothing is there right now, and we would follow all the city guidelines or requirements. Behind the proposed facility to the east, we will have parking and as well as an outdoor exhibit space. This exhibit space will display selected equipment in the asphalt and concrete industry. These will be used mainly for light demonstration and mainly for visual visualization of equipment. What we would like to do is, what we are proposing is a campus-like setting that would enhance safety and wellness. To the east of, of East 81st Street, between Rollins and Holton, we will, which is there, this is, this is all conceptual still. We were proposing that we do a maybe two dorm residential buildings and have living facilities. We would like to place a courtyard between the two residential buildings with landscaping to screen off vehicular traffic and prevent noise, noise from, from, from outer areas. To the east of that, we're proposing a To the east of that, we're proposing a athletic facility. And with this athletic facility, we, we're noticing that it would be for the residents as well as holding different types of tournaments within this, within the community. Because we've noticed that it's a popular thing now for these AAU teams to have different tournaments throughout the state. And we would like to be the host for those types of events. That's pretty much giving the ballpark. We just wanted to give you an idea of our conceptual design and for the space that the city has allowed us to acquire. And if we have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Commission members?
Mr. Chair, this is Councilman Slife. You know, I'm, I'm a bit confused because a few weeks ago, there was an article on Cleveland.com that suggested that this proposed project was no longer active. And, and let me just say, when I worked as a site selector, I spent a lot of time working with small communities saying, this is your best industrial site in your county, in your town. And there's going to be pressures to build a school on it or the bus garage on it or some other, some other use that is not the greatest ROI. Hold on to this property for industrial development. And I say that because the state of Ohio has paid, you know, three hundred and thirty million dollars to build a new road through the largest area of undeveloped land in the city of Cleveland. And while it's very laudable to have a training facility for construction jobs, this is the densest concentration of potential new construction in the city of Cleveland. And I don't understand why would we, would be removing our ability to create new jobs for a training institute that theoretically could, you know, go in, in another location. So I'll say, I'm surprised that this is here. I, I don't think that the rest of council knew that this was coming today. And unlike in a design review presentation where there is an ability to give some level of conceptual approval, this is a mandatory referral of an ordinance. And because of that, I think that at best we should table this. Because giving any kind of imprimatur from the planning commission for this legislation, I, I think is setting false expectations and deviates from the entire economic development strategy for this area of town.
Other commission members? Questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions, just for clarification. Maybe I missed it. I would like to see the site in the context, the overall kind of master plan for Opportunity Corridor and also like the larger kind of context for it and how it relates to that. I think as Charles is stating. And then the second thing for me is that the, I think I, I heard correctly, this smaller triangular parcel to the north here is also owned by the applicants. Is that correct?
Similar, different entities, same principles.
Right, which begs the question to me, why the entire site isn't being planned? And that seems extremely short sighted and also why that parcel is not being used. I, I have some concerns about that, which is why is this city land being utilized versus the land to the north along the road? And so why aren't we seeing a full plan? Or are we leaving this triangular parcel for what purpose for the north? We see sort of future development on this site, but that really worries me and, and don't understand. And I guess this is for David Ebersol. From an economic development point of view, why wouldn't this be planned to the road or the whole site when it's the same property owner? So, you know, we need to see that overall vision for this block so that we understand. I think as Charles said, it's like, what is the potential of this relative to the huge investment of Opportunity Corridor?
Sure, so the, the property to the north is the existing, there is an existing operation on there. That's where the, the McTech Perk Construction Office Building is. And so this land to the south then is the immediately developable space adjacent to it. To answer that question.
Do you have that, the overall master plan? Does it show? I, I just, I'm not as familiar. I'd like to see it.
Sure. Let me, see if I can show you best way to do that. You will not be able to share it. We don't have screen sharing turned on. Okay.
That's okay. I, I, I'm, I'm okay. I, I agree with Charles though.
Lillian?
We also have Director Collier with his hand raised.
Director, go ahead.
I want to provide some clarity with respect to the overall area here known as the core job zone. As you all reported, we adopted the East Seventy-Ninth Street Corridor Plan as part of the overall Opportunity Corridor visioning. And in that study, it incorporated the rapid transit facilities. It looked at redensifying East Seventy-Ninth Street. That was the precursor to RTA's investment in the initial red line station and will hopefully lead them to investing in the other station. The core job zone was slated for job creation and job growth. This particular facility, we believe, supports that because of the educational component and the workforce readiness component of it. To your point, Commissioner Curry, with respect to the entire site, in that Seventy-Ninth Street Corridor Plan, we do have a vision plan. When this particular proposal came, I guess, to economic development with respect to where the, the site could go, the core job zone kind of fit that description. Now, as you know, with all the development, when you have development proposals, you may not get developments of scale that actually match your vision one hundred percent. So with respect to this one, this was one of those low hanging fruit sites that offered opportunity to fulfill the overall mission, which the core job zone outlines, on a parcel that was available. The issue, and I'm just going to be a hundred percent transparent and everyone on the call and in the City of Cleveland knows this now, was the concern about an asphalt plant, which apparently is no longer part of this proposal. With respect to the Construction Institute, it is something that we believe is beneficial to the corridor and creates opportunity for residents, young people in this actual footprint to leverage the land in Opportunity Corridor for something that's productive for them. So there was a lot of alignment with respect to the Construction Institute itself. Mr. Slife brought up on a previous planning commission call, the concerns around the asphalt plant, the notches uses, concern with that particularly being next to what's envisioned to be some food-related uses. Very legitimate. And I think with respect to the mixing of that asphalt component of this, I think that makes it much more viable and appropriate for this corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Freddie, could you, could you also, I think, just follow on to that? And for me, talk about a similar study that was done for the food hub here? And, you know, what does this deviate in some way that will push that vision from coming forward? I mean, I think the question is, I know there's a lot of people in the community working towards that. And so it's all, you know, I guess the question is, why isn't, why isn't this all being aligned?
So a couple of things. With respect to the Seventy-Ninth Street study and Maurice, is it, is, is no way I can share my screen because this will deviate from the agenda because I can walk you through step by step. And I intend to do that on the thirteenth at the Food Hub discussion and provide that level of clarity with respect to the parcels in which we identify food-related uses for this food hub concept, which the Seventy-Ninth Street Corridor study actually illuminates. And I think in our last meeting on the Food Hub, part of the next agenda is for me to walk through that, to talk about how the food-related parcels line up with respect to this core job zone area.
Well, can, I guess where I'm going is, can, can the groups get together, including this group and you, and do that before you come to us? I mean, I always feel like this happens to the planning commission. We get put in this position. And why, why hasn't that happened already? This, you know, why, I mean, I'm now agreeing even more with Charles that we should table this so that that meeting can happen and that everyone can be in agreement about the, however, how all of this can get done together and support each other as opposed to, I, I think what's happening to us to kind of make a determination without everyone coming together and working together on where we should go and why.
Yeah, I think I, I think that's totally legitimate. And, and that's part of the reason why we, we do planning is to create that coordination. I think the question that everyone has to ask themselves here, and I'm going to post this to my colleague, Mr. Ebersol, with respect to the transaction itself, the transfer of the property and desire to have a use like this, you know, on this, this property, I think that's a, 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 a pretty clean desire and, and fit. It does not negate the need and the, the actions that have to happen with respect to coordination. And I think as a result of some of the latest conversations with the Food Hub group, that that still can happen. I don't know if the transactions that's being requested here today flies in the face of that at all based on what I know and what I've seen to this point. But I hear you loud and clear with respect to the, the conversation and coordinating around this. But I think with respect to the transactions that come before us, and I'll give you example, Commissioner Curry, you know, when we got a proposal and the, you know how this works? You know, the city gets proposals all the time. When we get these proposals and we look at measuring them against sort of what's the best location? You know, where do we have land available and all the other boxes that you have to check? You know, we do that and, and see if it, you know, see if it fits. You know, there was a strong desire with respect to the education component of this and how well that fit in with this whole workforce piece. Because we were not getting proposals of that, that magnitude with respect to job readiness. I know that's a priority for a number of organizations here in town. And if the residents in the immediate community don't benefit from workforce readiness or job creation, then that to me flies in the face of the intent of Opportunity Corridor. That is why the ten billion dollars was sought through the city of Cleveland to the state through a number of channels to remediate this land so that it has economic benefit for the surrounding community. And, and this institute does do that. I, I will say that. And again, let's not, you know, negate the, the elephant in the room that, that existed for a long time, which was the, the notion of asphalt facility. But that conversation is not the narrative at this point. So I, I think we need to, and this is my recommendation, you know, look at this in the context to your point, Mr. Curry, and I think with respect to the groups that are forming and the interest that is being generated, that that opportunity is there. But let's not necessarily negate the transaction with respect to the land for this type of facility. It is a legitimate use at this point with respect to the focus being on this Construction Institute.
Mr. Chair, you know, I'm, I'm going to move to table this and, and I'll just say that.
May I say something? Mr. Chairman, may I say something, say something before you table this? This is for a person. I am co-sponsoring this project with Mr. Norm Edwards. And first of all, I really am grateful to you all for having us today to talk about this project. This, this project is a project that is needed in that community. I am a, a former resident of that community. We went before the community a couple of weeks ago. And we had many people there from the community, including the council person and others and, and the stakeholders who have been displaced from this area for this corridor project, three mile project. So, so, and, and, and there was no, there were no, there was no one who found fault or reason why it should not exist among the people who have been displaced and among the stakeholders who live in the community. I think a food court is important, but as Mr. Collier so eloquently has explained, this, this, this job creation is extremely important to the people who are disadvantaged. You know, you know, we moved the asphalt plant and we were told that that was the problem. And, and, and we, we, we didn't necessarily agree, but for the sake of having everyone happy, we, we, we removed it. At the meeting, at the community meeting, I talked to some people after the, after the meeting was over and they said that they felt that maybe that was not the real reason. Maybe the reason why things have occurred is because someone does not want this project to exist. And they knew that, that the asphalt plant was one of the funding sources to support it. I, I think that to table this is totally, I, I, I haven't heard a good reason yet why it needs to be tabled. If the people who are going to benefit and the people lost the opportunity to live in that community don't have some input in wanting this there. My partner and I have spent a lot of money. And, and there's, there's nothing to be gained for us except we want to give back. Because there is a need for jobs in the community for the people who have been affected.
So, Mr. Chair, we're, we're going to lose our quorum at some point. So I, I, I really do think we need to move beyond this one.
Here, so, thank you for your comments, Fred. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we do have David Ebersol with his hand raised.
Go, go ahead, David.
Yeah, I, I appreciate Mr. Perkins' point. And I just, I had a couple of items to cover that the commissioners have brought up. I think, you know, I've had one conversation around the, the Food Hub study a couple of months ago that I think, you know, my understanding is that this use would be compatible with the similar type small-scale use developments that would also have the impact of activating on Seventy-Ninth Street. So I think that works. Happy to have a follow-up conversation, but I, I, you know, at the same time would, would point out respectfully that, you know, we've been working on assembling this property for years and have undertaken a significant amount of effort in putting environmental remediation together. And that was the only outreach I had and appreciate a couple of people who did that, but don't appreciate several of the other folks who have been involved in having conversations with everyone except for us who have tried to poison the well a little bit here. So that's, that's the only point. That's, that's a point I wanted to make. And, and so appreciate the discussion, look forward to further discussion on that, look forward to further discussion on this. But at the same time, you know, we've been working on this for a long time. It's not a secret.
All right, so there, there's a motion on the floor. If there's not a second, then it dies of no second. But is there a second? Okay, there's no second, so it dies of no second.
No, I said second, you didn't hear it.
Oh, did you? Okay, so there's a motion and a second. You know, the one thing I would ask Charles, you know, obviously there's more information they need to put out, especially how it works. they need to put out, especially how it works with, you know, food terminals and, and that type of thing. And I, I get where you're going, Charles. But, you know, at the end of the day, we have a problem in the construction industry that we don't have enough young people getting into it. And pretty soon we're going to find ourselves as a city that we can't build anything with local people. You know, and I would also say that we also have a dearth of, um, you know, refrigerator and freezer space for food terminals. And, um, we see that business going to Columbus and to Michigan. So I see both these needs as strong needs. And if it would be okay with you, I'd like to see the motion to a date certain because I think that's important to keep this thing on track.
If I could, I mean, I, I'm happy to come back in two weeks and have further conversation.
Charles is.
I'm, I'm, I, I will agree to that. You know, my concerns, my primary concerns are that we keep saying we need jobs in this community and I agree, we need jobs that pay well, have benefits. This is a school and I'm not understanding why this can't be brought in through TRIC or the trades or some other mechanism, what the value add is for a brand new institution, one. Two, you know, this road is almost open. I'm unclear what is being done with the economic development, Team Neo, to attract all of those uses into this corridor. And I'm not going to be supportive of quick and easy wins.
And I would say date certain is fine with me as a second, but I, I would hope that, um, before it comes back, these groups have gotten in the room and had a discussion about how to work together. I don't think it should come back if that hasn't happened. I think this, everyone, the food groups and the group and economics. You gotta get in a room all together with this group and, and, and work together and then come back.
Okay, so Dave and Freddie, you heard it. It would be great to have a comprehensive plan and I know that there's that information out there, but put it into the PowerPoint presentation so we can see it because obviously there's many needs the city has and I'd like to keep this ball rolling. So we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, we do have, we do have Director Collier with his hand raised and Commissioner Scott.
Yes, and I know we have to move along, but I want to be very clear about this. All right. Because I can be as adamant, uh, with respect to the planning that's been done in this corridor. We have a master plan for this corridor. We have an adopted 79th Street corridor plan specifically for the core job zone. The parcel to the north of this remains separated in that plan. This is why I'm a little agitated that I can't share my screen. So I'd be willing to go as far and Lilian, to your point, uh, with respect to this, uh, meeting that's coming up on the 13th with this group, I'm going to lay this out for them because we're not replanning the opportunity corridor. That won't, that should and will not happen. That will be a step backwards. What we ha- has to happen is that coalescing of efforts around continuing to add value to get the right transactions to occur. So if we can do that, that's fine. However, I do want to remind the commission members, we have an adopted plan. This building almost verbatimly fits into the actual physical footprint of what's proposed in that plan with a few nuances. The elephant in the room was the issue that everybody is very much aware of, which was the asphalt component of this. And I think that there has been other conversation outside of that asphalt plant. And there was not an issue with the actual education facility, even in previous discussions. Now there's an issue of all of a sudden with the actual education component. For me, that's a little bit troubling because of the need, uh, for this type of use. Now, if there's a question as to the confidence, uh, because I, I recall someone said, oh, TRIC or it should be this entity. There are partnerships associated with this that were articulated previously. I don't know if that fell, uh, there's a failure to remember that. But I would suggest this, Mr. Chairman. After this 13th meeting, which is literally next Friday, which will be a whole week prior to the, uh, Planning Commission meeting where that discussion will occur, Lilian. And then also at the Planning Commission meeting, if there's a need to put it in context, I'd be more than happy to lay that out for you and remind you of what we've adopted.
Okay, but can you make sure that the group proposing this is at the meeting so that everyone works together? It can't happen separately. So the, this group and the other groups have to get together at this meeting. It cannot be you and them and then you and them. Like get everyone in a room and then come back.
Everyone on the same page? Thumbs up. I saw the thumbs up. So everyone's on the same page. Hey, Fred.
Who is everyone? Who is everyone?
Including you. Including you, Fred.
What, 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 meet with who? Who, who are you asking us to meet?
By, Mr. Bowen.
No, no.
My request.
No, I'm going to finish my statement because I'm upset. Now, I know more than what is being said here. This, this is not right. Uh, uh, Mr. Collier has laid this out. There is a, 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 a path for an institute like this to happen. Why is not, why are we getting this pushback? It's weird. I don't know whether I will meet with anybody after this meeting because I know what's going on here. And it's not right. I'm done.
All right, Fred.
Mr. Chairman, we did have, uh, uh, Ms. Scott with her hand raised.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and the commissioners, I have to concur with Director Collier. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the area as far as living there or living in close proximity. But this plan I feel would be great, not only for the future of this area, but for the future of Cleveland. We have to look at it in a broader perspective. We're talking about not only economic development and job creation, but you're talking about lessening the crime in the area because you have an educational facility there that is going to provide not only training and jobs, but a, a vehicle for people to grow economically. I have to concur with the director. Um, I think we need to move on with the plan. I don't see any reason for any further discussion and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. So, so there was a motion and a second. And I would suggest if this passes, anyone that, um, doubts of validity of this plan should show up at the meeting on the 13th themselves too, so they can see it firsthand and then the next commission meeting. So, um, Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
No.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Have to abstain.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
No.
Life.
Yes.
That's a tie.
It's a tie. All right.
So for the sake of moving this forward, Mr. Chairman, if I can make a suggestion, Mr. Perkins, if you're on the line, Mr. Ebersol and all involved. At the end of the day, everyone wants to see this corridor be developed into something special and, uh, hopefully get the return on investment that the community deserves. I think by providing the opportunity to show this in the context of the larger master plan so that people can see clearly how this fits both from a physical standpoint and from the intent of having this type of use, I think will be additive. So I think providing, uh, the opportunity to do that, uh, will be very, very important. Um, and as I alluded to before, um, this is not foreign to what has been planned for the corridor that has been adopted. Now, there are interests, uh, that want to see a food distribution scenario here, which we've outlined in the plan on very specific courses. That includes, uh, building off of the, uh, Red All Grain Partnership and looking at other strategic parcels that have been slated and outlined for agricultural uses. And again, that is all in that, uh, plan that needs to be seen so that everyone can understand how this aligns and that this is not foreign. I think the, the most, uh, uh, concerning aspect of this, uh, proposal has been eliminated. And that, that says a lot. So I think it's very important to acknowledge that.
So Freddie, what do we have to do to move this on since it's a tie?
That's a good question.
Director, uh, as of conversations, can you make sure that Councilman Branca Telly's, uh, looped in, uh, as the head of the DPS Committee? Because he wasn't aware that this was coming up back before Planning Commission either. And I think that he's a, he's a key input, uh, on, on the council side.
Sure. So, so, so here, to make this a clean, uh, uh, clean, um, so the original motion was to table. It was a tie. So Charles, make the motion again for date certain.
I'll make, I'll make the motion for date certain. Was that August 13th?
No.
No. August 20th.
Yes.
Um, I'll make that motion, um, to table and to, uh, read here on August 20th.
Okay. Lilian?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion second to table. Michael, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
He abstained.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
No.
Life.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries and please, commission members, um, that, uh, question this, please show up on the 13th too. And Freddie, would you include all the commission members if they want to come?
I don't think we can do that just from Sunshine Law point of view. So I don't think we should do that. We can't, we can't do that.
So at least two can show up.
And let me just be clear what this conversation on the 13th was intended to be and the reason why it was even brought up. It was to provide clarity on the master plan for this interest group who seeks to advance the Food Hub concept. It is very important for them to be clear that the city of Cleveland's plan is in play and we've been working that approach. That goes back to the point of making sure that people understand what these moves are, what these plays are, and we be transparent about them and clear about this. This is something that we intend to pursue. We will not be going backwards. The goal is to move forward. And with respect to the whole Food Hub concept, for them to get an understanding of where in the corridor we had, uh, slated or identified these agricultural Food Hub uses. With respect to the facility that we rezoned for, uh, a couple of months back, that's additive to the food conversation with the freezer facility as well as a job creator. So there's some intentionality here. And this also fits and this, what we're going to demonstrate to everyone is how this fits in the context. That is what these two weeks are being for is to reinforce this.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and just make sure we have a nice complete presentation with the next one with that information. Thanks, Freddie. So let's move on to the next. It's ordinance number, uh, 539 2021. This is authorizing the mayor and the commissioner of purchase and supplies to acquire and reconvene properties owned by 5506 Detroit LLC or its designee and the Mayakur Familia LLC or its designee located at 5506 Detroit Avenue for the purpose of entering into a chain of title for a TIF. Who's here to speak to this one, please?
Yep, me again.
Okay, me again. Go ahead, Dave.
Yep. All right. So this project, this, this authorizes the entry into the chain of title is precondition to a non-school TIF. This would support the, um, we're really an oak project on, uh, Detroit at, at West 55th Street. This is a, um, mixed-use project, 126 unit building. It's about 17,000 square feet of, uh, retail space, about a $47 million investment all told, um, at, at this site. And this, this is a cool project. It's a new investment group coming into the city. And, uh, we've worked with the councilwoman there as well and she's, she's supportive of the project.
Commission members.
I move approval. Downing.
Second, Curry.
They have motion second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, please take a look at the administrative approvals and I'll take a motion when you're ready.
While everyone's looking, David, um, I put something in the chat, but I would ask that staff verify. I don't believe three to two with an abstention is a tie for the future. So we have the law department review that. The vote was technically three to two with an abstention. Um, I didn't want to say it, but, um, in the time that you were doing it, um, I believe that is not a tie. But can we have law verify that?
Yeah, thank you, Lilian.
I move approval on the administrative referrals.
Second, Lucker.
So you have a motion, a second, further discussion. Call the roll, please. Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Far West Design Review, Arby's renovation seeking final approval. This is at 17325 Loraine Avenue. Who's here for this one, please?
Hi, this is Jordan Fleishman, CESO.
Uh, Jordan, uh, please raise your right hand. Uh, do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Also may I add, Joseph Peters from Arby's Corporate is also here.
Okay, did you? Swear yet. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Good morning. Um, just want to discuss this project. It's, uh, the redevelopment of an existing restaurant into an Arby's restaurant with drive-through service located in the Cam's Corner District. Proposed improvements include, uh, facelift of the existing building and then site improvements including, uh, new landscaping, pedestrian-friendly patio and front entrance, uh, updated parking lot, uh, to fix the ADA compliance issues and then, uh, dual, dual drive-through service. As it was noted, we were previously on the agenda and received conceptual approval. And we have also worked with, um, Adam Davenport and the Planning Department to satisfy their comments. So today we are seeking approval and, um, take any questions.
Do we have an elevation?
Yes, it should be further along in the drawings.
Okay.
The floor plan, there's the elevations.
Okay, there's a, a number of things that came from, uh, design review. Commission members, questions?
I am supportive. I believe the only outstanding item is, uh, the signage. I believe the signage has to come back for separate approval. But I am, uh, willing to, uh, make the motion i- in incorporating the recommendations of design review.
I will second Downing.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, further discussion. Michael?
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Yes.
Curry.
Curry, yes, yes.
McCray Scott. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries, good luck. Uh, next is Kruger Group Apartments, new construction. This is at one two seven zero West 56th Street. Who's here for this one?
Paul Loacki with Demet Architects.
Okay, great. Raise your right hand.
Peggy Brown. Peggy Brown is also on the line.
Oh, Peggy Brown. Everyone that's going to speak, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear? And, and when you say I do, state your name for the record. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth enough, but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Paul Loacki, I do.
I do.
Hey Bobby.
Peggy Brown, I do.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Great. Thank you, commission members for hearing this this morning. We have actually presented this project to the design review, the local design review twice now. First for a preliminary review, we got some comments from them and then we addressed those. We met with them the past Wednesday. And I think we had a very positive conversation. They just had one additional comment to the project. So I will run through this quickly to expedite on time here. The proposal is for a four-story apartment building with a fifth-story small space for residents together. The project is 30 apartment units and some ground floor amenity spaces and a sloping graded below grade parking lot and some surface parking. Next slide, please. Uh, the site is located kind of at the just south of about two. The property to the north of this is the Edison Apartments and Town Home Project. Uh, we have some industrial buildings surrounding it to the west and to the south. Immediately to the south of this project is an industrial building. That is actually owned by the Kruger Group that they have renovated into storage on the first floor and offices on the second floor. Uh, and to the, we go to the next slide, we can see some images of the surrounding properties as well. To, to the center, immature is the actual site. Currently is being used as parking, has kind of long been used as parking for the Parkview Restaurant across the street. Not legally, but that's kind of been a function. And you can see kind of going from the upper left there, the industrial buildings. Looking down Breakwater Avenue at the apartments and also down West 58th to the apartments at the Edison. Four-story buildings with some five-story pop-ups on the corner. Uh, the bill, the picture to the left is their property to the south, the Kruger Group's property to the south. Um, being renovated, that's even an older photo. It's almost complete at this point. Uh, and then the townhomes just to the north across the street on Breakwater, the picture to the right. The venerable Parkview Restaurant across the street and then Catty Corner opening, open site. That is access to the bike way that goes to Edgewater and then of course to down to downtown. Uh, next slide, please. So the, the project is on the corner of West 58th and Breakwater Avenue. The proposal is to have kind of a ground floor. That is both access to the parking and some ground floor amenity spaces for the, the apartment building itself. The access vehicularly off of West 58th goes into a sloping garage that slopes to the west. Uh, and then on the far west portion of the site. Uh, on Breakwater, there is also a vehicular access point for parking that is at grade. So it kind of stacks over at some sections that show that further on the presentation. Uh, at the corner of West 58th and Breakwater. We're proposing the main entry to the building. So we'll have lobby, possibly some leasing offices. Uh, and some mail rooms, access to stairs and elevators at that main corner entry. Uh, and then working our way down Breakwater Avenue, we're proposing holding amenities, a fitness room. Um, will be in there further down on the west, almost at the parking. Surface parking there on the west is our trash room that will access out to Breakwater. Um, and then just kind of notably on the site plan to the south. Between this new building and the existing building, we will have an access for an, a entrance to their building to the south. Um, and then on the west end of this building, there is also an access point to their building to the south. The, the proposal is for 30 apartment units. Um, one, two, one twos and studios in a mix on the upper floors. There's three stories above this. Um, and we are proposing 44 parking spaces and some of those will be used. We have nine dedicated spaces for the tenant to the south. Uh, so we are still over the zoning requirement for parking spaces for both the apartment, you know, for all the units in the apartment building. Um, next slide, please. Uh, the typical upper second, third and fourth floor plans, units, corridor and stairs. And then a small fifth floor with a clubroom and a outdoor deck space, taking advantage of the views. Um, you can see on this plan, all of the units are proposed to have balconies, which we think creates kind of a nice breakdown of the scale of the building. And we'll see that in some of the elevations and 3D studies. Next slide, please. Um, this is the landscape plan. I'll let Peggy, Peggy Brown speak to these.
Thank you. Um, as you can see, there's not a whole heck of a lot of landscaping involved. So we've tried to make the biggest thing for what we could with the space we're allocated. And there's a lot of power lines, both West 58th and Breakwater. So we're using some slender silhouette sweet gums that will be on 58th and those will wrap the front of the building over on Breakwater. And then switching to a hot wings hedge maple that's going to get some size and width. So you'll be able to walk under a canopy. But again, they'll stay underneath the lines and the rest of the landscaping is all drought tolerant. Native or adaptive use for the area and then mostly ornamental grasses with a few shrubs. Um, we are proposing some bike racks on that west end of the building that will be under the overhang from the building above. That will have some can lighting and recessed lighting in that overhang to provide some safe and secure lighting and a little bit of accent on those bike racks. Uh, the next sheet. This is just a sampling of the plant material. Again, the really upright type habit of those slender silhouettes, it'll be on 58th. So they'll bypass the lines and then the against the face of the building on Breakwater, the hot wings. Maples to give a little bit of color and splash through some marrows that will be on it. And then the mix of ornamental grasses, a few frowny shrubs, but working on a lot of fall color with a choice of plant material along with some evergreen to give it a four season look to the building. The bike rack, we're choosing something a little bit more sculptural and artistic endeavor there instead of just a plain typical bike rack look. So to add a little bit of punch on that west face of the building as well. And that's it.
Uh, next slide, please. Um, and just, I didn't mention it, but we did submit this for a zoning review. We have one variance currently noted that we have to discuss with the, the city, which is the south lot line setback from. The, the lot line. Um, and we're, we're discussing whether that is a rear or a side yard setback. Uh, but other than that, we do not have any zoning variances that we are requesting. Just a, a quick couple of sections through the building here to kind of show how that parking is working, sloping down to the west. Uh, and then getting the surface parking lot over the top of it. Uh, and then also the fitness area staying at grade as you, as you go down Breakwater. Next slide. This is the elevation on West 58th Street. So we are using the balconies throughout the building to kind of create a, a breakdown of the massing. Um, and working with kind of some of the, um, the architecture around this property, the more industrial. Language, the masonry, obviously the brick bringing that material in. Um, but you know, taking much more of a modern approach than kind of just doing a, a industrial kind of refresh. And so the building, you know, works its way down West 58th from the south. Their adjacent building is in that darker red brick to the left of this slide. Uh, and we worked to scale the building up, starting with a kind of single story portion of the garage. Uh, and then building up into the apartments themselves. So we're at four stories. And then in the corner to give a much more solid presence to the corner of West 58th and Breakwater. Working our way up to a five-story portion for that, the amenity space up on the roof. The parking garage portion of this elevation really is kind of the only portion where you actually see the parking garage. Uh, so we have right there in the middle, the balcony slot comes all the way down. And there's the entrance to the garage, just a single door there. So we're, we're trying to really lessen the presence of the, the garage on the street. And the interaction between the pedestrian and the vehicles entering in and out of that garage. Uh, we've done this in a number of different places in terms of. Signals, whether that be lighted signals or audio signals to allow any, when the cars are going in or out, that garage door is opening. The pedestrian would be notified of them coming out. The, and you'll see this much better, I think, in some of the 3D images. So I'll kind of go through this quickly. But the portion of the garage, we are planning on screening there with a, like a mesh material. Uh, that will be backlit. Uh, we will have some signage, which of course we will come back once that is designed for approval. Uh, and we are planning on locating that on that facade there. And then as you see right between the existing building to the south and this new building, carrying that metal, that metal mesh. Across as a gate as an entrance to the pathway to their building there. As we move down Breakwater towards, or down 58th towards the corner of Breakwater. Uh, the building opens up on the lower level, will have a quite a bit of glass. And that metal ACM metal panel wraps itself around from the upper portion of the units down to the entry. Um, and the brick box right there on the corner is actually a cantilever a couple of feet to create a, an entry. Covered entry over the main entry to the building. We are proposing some metal tie rods and some steel structural decorative elements to really kind of create a focal point on this corner. Um, and the next slide that wraps around over to the Breakwater side. So that glass and, and ACM metal panel carries around the corner. Um, and then again wraps itself up along that balcony. Um, as we go along the Breakwater elevation, the building's kind of grounded on the corner. And then we've also grounded it on each end of the building. The stair tower, kind of that massive brick coming down to the grade. Um, and then the middle section of the building also has these floating balconies and residential elements that float over the storefront. Um, that is recessed back and that would be the fitness area back there. And then as we get to the very end of the building in the west, the very last west unit is recessed back. To kind of create that other floating element. If we can go to the next slide. Uh, the rear of the building, so the, the far right of this, because of the height of the building to the south. We are taking and wrapping that brick facade of that massing around. So as you come up West 58th to the north, you would still see this masking, either walking or driving up the street. Uh, and then as the building then recesses back further and it's hidden behind the existing storage building to the south. Uh, we're transitioning over to a ribbed metal panel in kind of a variety of panel orientations. Uh, next slide, please. And then this would be the far west elevation, that end unit again, cantilever, not cantilevered out, but floating on, on structure. Continues that ACM panel, some really high quality materials kind of wrapping all the way around the building. As this is kind of open as you go down Breakwater from west to east. Uh, we wanted to make sure that them, that had some high quality materials. I will note the one comment that we received from the local design review. Um, board was they would like to see maybe a few more windows on this elevation. Uh, and so we are open to that and can definitely incorporate that as that was one of their strong suggestions. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, materials that we're proposing, obviously brick will be, brick in the ACM metal panel will be the predominant materials on the building. We are going with kind of a little bit more of a traditional brick color. One that the Kruger Group has used on some projects that they've worked on, one in Chicago specifically, a very handsome brick. And then the gray ACM metal panels. Uh, you can see the metal mesh screen that we're proposing at the garage that I mentioned. Um, and then some decorative elements. The stainless steel tie rods and connectors kind of at that main entry. And then as it continues along the fitness, we're incorporating that there as well. Some aluminum window fins at specific locations, you'll see much more in the 3D views. Um, in terms of lighting, we are proposing these wall sconces. Uh, we will have a larger 18-inch version up-down light at the main entries to the building. And those are located on here on this elevation at the bottom. And then a smaller version of that, a 12-inch sconce at the balcony lights. Those will be on a, a light sensor, so that those will all go on at the same time. The, that way it kind of creates a, you know, a consistent lighting scheme to the entire building. The entry portions at the fitness area, where we have that kind of recessed glass portion on Breakwater. Uh, we will be proposing can lights to kind of create a nice wash over that whole thing. So that'll have a floating effect both during the daytime and at the nighttime. And that will also be the same with the unit to the very west, the metal box. Um, that whole portion where the surface parking is, will also have can lights will, which will be dual function, obviously aesthetics. Uh, but also for safety concerns at that location. Um, the balconies will have this vertical cable railing component. So trying to create a very light balcony, so it kind of fades away. But not creating that ladder effect that you have a lot with, you know, the horizontal cables there. Um, the windows propose will be of a kind of a dark gray color to match the storefront and the ACM metal panels. Uh, next slide, please. We're going to get into the, some of the 3D images here. So this is the view at the corner of West 58th and Breakwater, looking across kind of from the northeast of the park. Uh, I think you can really start to, you know, see the, the floating masses that we're doing, the way that we've broken down the mass of the building. And how it steps down 58th especially, scale-wise from that kind of taller, more solid corner. Uh, and then to the existing building and even the existing building to the south steps down. So we're really kind of following that, that pattern. Um, and this, you know, the scale of this building, I think is very much in, in the scale of the, you know, the, the Edison project. Uh, and of course meets the zoning requirements. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the view across on West 58th. Um, next slide, please. Uh, this I think gives maybe a little bit more clearer view of the building on the west as you come down Breakwater. Uh, how that, that end unit will kind of float out there. Um, again, taking that ACM metal all the way around this until you get to where the building really steps back on the west beside. Next slide, please. Uh, another view of that corner, just getting a little closer in. Next slide, please. Uh, kind of an aerial view, you know, showing again more of the breakdown of the building, how that surface parking works to the west. Next slide, please. Uh, a kind of a close-up of that entry that I was talking about. So we have kind of that decorative tie rods there. Just kind of creating a little bit more of an accent to the, the corner entry of the building. Kind of see how the building has the overhang there to create some protection from the, the weather as you're entering the main lobby. Um, next slide, please. Uh, just a view of that back corner, uh, cause you don't see that too much, but showing the, the parking there and then the building to the south. Uh, next slide, please. Just some close-up views of, of some of those decorative elements. This is the view as you walk down Breakwater. Next slide, please. And the view, I think this is a really good view of kind of that metal mesh screening that we're planning on the parking garage there. Uh, and kind of how that incorporates into the rest of the materials, the building. And kind of how that incorporates into the rest of the materials, the building. That may be the last slide. Next slide, please. Yep.
Okay, commission members, questions?
I move approval incorporating the design review comments.
Second, Curry, I think it's a wonderful project too, so I wanted to say that.
Motion second, further discussion? Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I must recuse myself from this next presentation.
Um, I, I also need to as well, because we are, we have an investment, a foundation has a dollars in this project as well. So I'll recuse myself.
Well, here, and we got another prime, we got Crossroads, which is our piece. That they're leaving at eleven o'clock. So let's do this, we'll, we'll do. Because we don't want to lose the form for this one either. We'll do this one first. This one got passed with no comment. So maybe we can do this one quickly, this Innovation Square. And then we got to go right to Crossroads, otherwise we're going to lose the presenter. So everyone that's going to speak to Innovation Square Phase One, raise your right hand, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. As you shall answer under the penalty of perjury, please say yes and state your name.
I do, Christopher Sarchek.
You're by yourself then. Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for your time this morning. And since you've seen this before, I will try to be brief. This first plan just gives you a little bit of context to remind you of where we are. We are fronting East one hundred and fifth Street, Opportunity Corridor at the very northern end. South of Cedar and the Cleveland Clinic and north of Quincy Avenue. Next slide. Just quickly a reminder of the other investments that are going on, as well as the fact that this is part of a greater neighborhood wide plan. A vision that the local CDC Fairfax Renaissance Development Corporation has developed that we developed in partnership with them about four or five years ago. As you can see, there's a vision for the whole neighborhood that includes rebuilding the disinvestment that has taken place here. Reinforcing the housing stock and creating a green space, Playwright Park, which has already been constructed. And on the next slide, you'll see some of the other mixed use developments from outside investors and other community partners that are planned for in and around this area. Including the clinic's biorepository and a mixed use development with a grocery and apartments just to the north of this building. Next slide. So here you can see the existing conditions of the site. It's vacant land and just some, some scrub and some scraggly trees that are kind of hanging out on the site today. Next slide. Here, north is to the left, just to help orient you, East one hundred and fifth Street is to the top of your screen. As you can see, we are, we have pushed the building per the urban form overlay that was adopted by this commission for this neighborhood. So we are following all of those guidelines. We've worked with city planning to ensure that everything we're showing here aligns with the, the vision for that form. Not a lot has changed since the last time I was here. You know, we're still around seventy seven parking spaces. That number will increase as soon as we're able to acquire that missing lot from the foreclosure process. But you can see that the, the building has a great presence on East one hundred and fifth Street and the future Hudson Avenue that is not there today. But we are working with the city to get that constructed here very soon. Next slide. Here is our landscape plan. And if you, you can see that there is a, it is very densely landscaped. The owner developer team in the Cormac Perrin Salazar that is partnering here with Fairfax Renaissance. Takes a lot of pride in their properties and their appearance. And if you go to the next slide, you can see the palette of those, those materials that we are, are looking to plant here. It's a very colorful seasonal palette to bring a lot of interest. They do plan to irrigate the site so that it will receive proper watering and it will look nice throughout the season. We have a selection of our site furniture here as well. Many of these pieces mimic those that were already installed in Playwright Park that is diagonal from this property. So we're trying to develop a, a common language and a continuity within this neighborhood. Just to help keep it look pulled together. Next slide. Here is our lighting plan. The, the yellow haze kind of indicates so that you can find where the fixtures are on the site. We have a mixture of building lighting, pathway lighting, canopy lights, lighting in the parking lot. These halos do not represent the reaches of the illumination. We have done a full study and determined that there is, there is a very sufficient adequate level of lighting across the whole site. So that, you know, safety and sight is not a concern. And the next slide will show you the fixtures that we're proposing to use. The two on the top are our wall fixtures, depending on where we are in the building and what we're trying to illuminate. You will see those, they will be of a matching color. These are just, you know, the, the catalog images that are available of them. The bollards on the lower left are what we'll be using for the pathway lighting. They are the same ones that are in Playwright Park. We have the, the, the taller fixture for the parking lots. And then we have decorative string lights that we will be using on the outdoor patio, as well as the roof deck that I will, I'll show you where those are in a few minutes. Next slide, please. Here's a ground floor plan in, on the site to show you what, what is where in the building to give you a little bit of context. There is our community and fitness rooms, our leasing offices. Those are all activating that prominent corner to provide activity and visibility on those, on that street corner. And then the, excuse me, the balance of the buildings are our residential units with our primary living spaces facing outwards. To, to add to that and eyes on the street and, and activity feel. You can also see hints of it here on the site plan that any of the units on the ground floor, with the exception of those on one hundred and fifth Street. Those other units will have outdoor patio spaces for those residents. It's a nice added feature that we'll have here. We think, we feel it's a very nice amenity to have. Since we have the opportunity for it here. The next couple of slides are the floor plans, the second and third floors stacked, the fourth floor also does. And then you'll notice that it's just a partial floor plan. It peels back because as a reminder, you know, we wanted to have that strong presence on Opportunity Corridor fitting for the, for the area. But then stepping the building down as it returns into the neighborhood allows us to kind of step that scale down. So that it feels more appropriate and then also allows us the opportunity to open up views to, towards downtown, over the neighborhood. Provide a rooftop lounge and, and deck amenity space. And we feel like this is a really great feature to have, especially because this is a mixed use or a mixed income building. So, so this speaks to a lot of the ability, you know, both the market rate and, and the more affordable component. Here, these are just really nice spaces to have for those. So the next slide. This is the floor plans for the residential units. We can see we have a mix of studios, one and two bedrooms. They are, we are up to, we're at eighty two units, which is the same as before. Our unit makes since the last time, just shuffled up a little bit to allow us to tighten up the efficiency of the building. But we are still maintaining that same unit types. All of, a, a number of these units have accessibility, universal design components. That is something that's really important to the developers. So we have been happy to include those components in this building. And then the next slide. Oh, you can see our elevations, these are the two primary elevations. The top one fronts East one hundred and fifth Street, the bottom one, the future Hudson Avenue. As you can see, we've got in the top left and the bottom right, there is our, our kind of extended out jewel box, if you will, of a, a brick feature on this corner of the building. You can see that the, the ground floor underneath it is recessed a little bit to announce its prominence here, where those community and fitness rooms are. We have a mix of brick, irrigated metal siding, some metal panel. And the, the, the textured brown color is also a metal panel, but it will have a wood look to bring some warmth to this building. On the left, lower left, you can see that, that is where we have our outdoor patio. And, and it is enclosed, the structure there is a sort of pergola type structure to provide like some shading and some privacy to continue those building lines along that stretch of the future street. But the other nice thing about this is that it kind of talks catty corner to Playwright Park at that intersection. So it kind of draws on and opens up that corner to really create a, a community feel. And on the top here, you can start to see the, the resident lounge and roof deck. On the next slide, it shows our two rear elevations. And it's really important to note that we have continued to use the same materials around the entire building. We have not used a lesser grade of material at the back of this. Because we know that across the street, as this development continues. This may be the back of this building, but it's the front of somebody else's home. So we wanted to make sure that it looks nice, three hundred and sixty degrees. So next slide. I believe we have a, a close up of our colors and our, our palette here, just those materials that I described with our, our brick masonry and black windows and, and the different grays of the siding, depending on which section you are in with the base to add the little bit of interest. And, and of course, the aluminum siding and the different wood tones to provide, again, that warmth and that texture. Next slide. And here we just have just a couple of renderings to, to give you a little bit more of a perspective. This is the primary one at the corner of East one hundred and fifth to your right, the future Hudson extension to your left. You can see the, the roof deck kind of in the top, starting to peel back as this steps down into the neighborhood. Next slide. Here's a view from the back. You can see that we are screening our parking, creating that lush landscape edge and a lot of trees on the site. And just, just looking at those materials that we are continuing around the building. And I think there's maybe one more slide. There you go. This one is showing you that open resident lounge at the top. The patio at the ground floor, our, our masonry screen wall that we're using to kind of hold that edge and create the privacy at those patios, it's just a low wall. So there is a little bit of like transparency at that line and of course the landscaping here. And I believe that concludes my presentation.
Mission members?
Move approval, Downing.
Second, is it?
Director Collier has his hand raised and so does Commissioner Scott.
Okay, Director.
Yes, just really quick, I just want to say that this is a, a plan and a project that's very much consistent with a number of plans with respect to the Opportunity Corridor, a go figure. And also consistent with the Thrive one oh five ninety three plan. Where we've identified two nodes, there were illustrations in that plan that almost mirror this actual building design. So kudos to city architecture with respect to staying in alignment with the proposals. So from a departmental perspective, we actually fully endorse this. And there are some other developments along the stretch that are yet to come, but that are, you know, are going to be ready to go pretty soon. So we're really excited about the build out of this. Thank you.
Thanks. Who else?
Commissioner Scott.
The only question I had was about the parking, is that secured parking or is this open?
So it is not secured. We do not have plans at this stage to fully gate it off. There, that, there will be that contingency if there is a need for it in the future, but we are not planning to do that. There's just the, you know, the masonry walls will just end kind of at the driveways for the residents to pull in.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Michael?
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Hey Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Motion carries, let's move on to Crossroads. Public art, because we're going to lose that person pretty soon if we don't hurry.
Thank you, Chairman. For the record, I'm Tara Petras, the public art coordinator for the city of Cleveland. This project, Crossroads Still We Rise, is a first of its kind augmented reality exhibit in the city. And I say first of its kind as far as an exterior installation, it's been done inside at the art museum. This is brought to us by the Sculpture Center. And the project locations are in five different underserved neighborhoods of Cleveland. Buckeye, Central, Glenville, Kinsman and Slavic Village. There are going to be two locations at each of those. In each of those communities and wards five, six, nine and ten, and an additional two sites in East Cleveland, which obviously isn't under your purview. And they use an app to be able to access the augmented reality art. I'm in full support of this project. It's nice to see technology driven projects. So obviously the art doesn't physically exist in the space. But I am going to turn this over to the executive director of Sculpture Center, Grace Chan, to go through the particulars. And I do want to mention that all of the artists are local artists. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Grace.
Grace, you're muted.
Can we help with that, Maurice?
No, she has to unmute herself.
Now am I good?
You're good.
Okay, cool. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about who we are. The Sculpture Center is a cultural institution on the eastern edge of University Circle. And we provide the critical resources to sculptors to help advance their journey. Next slide. Next slide, please. I want to tell you about a new program we are launching this year called Crossroads. It's an exhibition that uses immersive technology to connect artists, their artwork and their communities around issues of importance. This year is the first of its kind in Cleveland. We're in twelve locations across Cleveland. Next slide, please. I mentioned immersive technology. We are using augmented reality to experience the artwork. Augmented reality is a way of digitally imposing objects in the real world space. For this exhibition, we're using a specific app that you download on your device. And you will go around the city at each of sites and open that app to meet artwork. Next slide. And these are the artists. And these are the artists who are participating, 12 artists. They're all Cleveland based, all African American, multi generational. Next slide. These are the neighborhoods where our art can be viewed. They're all east side neighborhoods that have been Boston, the racial divide. They are Buckeye, Central, Glenville, Kinsman, Slavic Village and East Cleveland. Next. I wanted to tell you a little bit about the art that one would see on a site. If you look at the two images on the screen, when you go to the physical site and you open the app, this is the artwork that you'll see in the space. So the two here are in Buckeye. The first one is East 99th and Buckeye, that intersection. The second one is Schofield Mansion. And each of these sites have some kind of historic relevance to either the history of Cleveland, the neighborhood now, or the artists themselves. Next slide. These are the artworks you'll see in Central at the Goodwill Building, which was a former site of the Majestic Hotel, a hotel that was primarily for African American clientele. And the Woodland Cemetery. Excellent. These are the works you'd see in Glenville at the site of the Glenville High School and Rex Center. And Cora Methodist Church. These are in Kinsman. We give note to the box spot. And also to the Riddell Green Partnership. Next. In Slavic Village, we are pointing out the empty lots. And this one in particular is next to the Bagby Nichols Building on Broadway, which was very close to the central downtown that once served Slavic Village. And the second image is in front of the Elizabeth Baptist Church, which is close to the Slavic Village side of the Sideway Bridge. So this artist placed a recreation of the bridge at this location. She's part of a team of individuals who are working to resurrect that bridge in the future. Next slide. And in East Cleveland, you would see the artwork in front of the gates, the columns of the Ed Packer Creative Arts Complex and also along the Forest Hills footbridge. I believe that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
This is the project and I move approval.
I'll second Downing.
Motion second, further discussion. Michael, call the role, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Next is Near West Design Review, West 20th Street and the Smithtown Homes New Construction. And this is for schematic design approval. Who's here for this? Anyone? West 20th Street and Smithtown Homes New Construction.
Should be Katie McCoy.
We have Wesley Harper.
There we go.
Okay. Hey Wes, are you on the, are you on the line?
I am, yes.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you sound like swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Hey, so for this project, we are in Duck Island, West 20th Street and Smith Court. Smith Court runs east west in between Lorraine and Abbey and then West 20th runs from Lorraine to Abbey as well, but then back south towards Wiley and north towards the Stonely Project, which is going up right now. Next. So here you can see the footprint of our site. It is West 20th on the west side of the project, Smith Court on the south. And then West 20th Place kind of snakes to the north from Smith Court on the east side of the project site. There's obviously been a lot of redevelopment in this area. And so this is kind of the next step. The larger block to the south of us is a future, most likely multifamily mixed use project, which would likely be four to five stories. It's been zoned as such. And so we think that the development that we're proposing here today, it's kind of the step down from that in terms of density. And then kind of meeting into the existing context of single family homes. Next. So for the existing context, we have images here of West 20th Street. Starting at the top left, we have some single family duplexes and I think even a triplex on West 20th Street, which is increasingly more heavily trafficked street as it's one of the primary connections from downtown to Duck Island, as well as Tremont, further to the east. The image in the middle shows the four houses which would be demolished for this project. The image to the top right is the existing corner of Smith and West 20th Street. The image at the bottom left is one of the homes that which would remain north of us on West 20th Street, of which there would be three. Across the street, the bottom middle of the presentation here is the Morgan Linen Company. They basically process dirty linens from restaurants across the city. The facility itself is kind of a light industry with a large surface parking lot fronting West 20th Street. At the bottom right, you can see the kind of the full scope or full view north on West 20th Street with downtown in the background. Next. Some further context imagery at the top left, you can see West 20th Place heading north from Smith Court. There's already a handful of new homes on this extremely tight alley on the west side of the street. And then the east side of the street contains mostly garages off of West 20th Place. Top right, you can see the current condition of the larger Abbey Block to the south of us. It's currently being used as a staging area for fill for the Stonely Project to the north. Bottom or excuse me, middle left, you can see Smith Courts with a new housing that's flanking West 19th Street to the east. Next. So the proposed plan that you see in front of you is kind of the the next steps that we've taken since we had the lot split approved for the single family house that you can see facing West 20th Place. And so basically what we're doing is wrapping the west and southern property lines with townhomes. And then there's two single family homes kind of off the driveway in the middle of the project site. As you can see, we've got the existing three homes remaining to the north of us on West 20th Street. And then you can see the larger footprints of the new homes that exist on West 20th Place. So this has been an area of a transition. There's been, again, a lot of new development over here. And this is the next step in that. You can see along West 20th Street, we have inset parallel parking. Through our, going through the neighborhood process, we've gotten feedback that people would rather have the larger tree lawn remain there. Which, so we're going to be eliminating that parking on West 20th Street and basically line it with street trees. And since the developer, Matt Burgess, he projects puts the electrical line underground, we'd be removing the overhead wires here on 20th Street, which would allow us to have larger growth trees in the tree lawn, which will kind of, in my opinion, make 20th a much more pedestrian friendly experience. Next. So here you can see an elevated view looking towards the northeast of the project. Our scope today is the kind of the white and gray colored units here. To the right, you can see what we would expect to be a larger multifamily project. And so again, it's kind of stepping down from that larger development, which would happen to the south. Our site here and then down to the single family homes on 20th. What you can see, we're basically creating a new context in many, many ways along 20th and Smith as well. The units are organized to have the roof access structures towards the west and to the south, which would allow the roof decks to get expansive views of downtown from the rear of the units. Next. These renderings are also somewhat out of date, showing the inset parking. So that would actually just be a larger tree lawn with more trees. And then another advantage of this is to make garbage day a little bit more organized where, you know, adding 15 units to the street means we've got 30 recycling and trash cans. So this tree lawn will also accommodate that a little more easily. The units themselves are clad in horizontally oriented cement board. And then very simple punched openings for the sliding doors, which would become Juliet balconies with railings in front of them. Next. So in terms of the pedestrian experience, we're of course very conscious of that. And so we wanted to have a good amount of planting along the sidewalk and then also define each entry to each unit. So we have an alternating color defining that vertical portion of the entry. And then we have a horizontal element that kind of sticks out from that entry area defining each of those spaces. You know, the units themselves are very similar across this facade. However, the way we've oriented the buildings individually kind of creates a bit more of a random layout of the the forms of this. And so, you know, in order to break up this large facade, we have the facade moving in and out relative to West 20th, which we think is successful here. Next. Here's a view showing the existing context to the north of us. You know, of course, it's it's rather difficult sometimes to completely match the scale and proportions that exist with the context around us. But in a gesture of, you know, trying to step down to the context, we have the shorter portion of the unit closest to the northern context, you know, at its lowest point. Next. Just another elevated view. Next. And here's a view at ground level from 20th and Smith. And so Smith, we think, you know, can really be transformed into a very pedestrian friendly experience. Right now, it's just basically a dusty forgotten sidewalk at this point. Next. Another straight on view, the units. Next. Here's kind of an elevated view. To your right, you see West 20th Place as a dead ends to the north. And these are the units that face Smith. Next. Here is the single family home facing West 20th Place and then the units to the left. So, you know, there is you know, quite a bit happening back here. Next. Other view of Smith and West 20th Place. Next. And so here is our material palette. Again, the horizontally oriented cement board, smooth finish concrete, black metal panels and fiberglass windows and then, you know, variety of lighting options. So to this point, we've been to Near West Design Review, we were approved for schematic design. We've also been to Block Club where we were the conversation really centered around that inset parking on West 20th Street. And then the same for Tremont West Economic Development Committee. Since there were no variances, because we're in the townhouse code, letters of support were not required from Tremont or the Block Club. And so in our meeting with Near West, there were a couple of changes that were requested, which we're going to comply with. We're going to be adding a front porch element to the units that face Smith and West 20th. And then attempt to get some vegetation into the driveways off of Smith and West 20th Place. So with that, I'll open it up for comment. I guess you guys are reviewing for a design review and schematic design.
Mr. Commissioner Members?
Mr. Chairman, we have Commissioner Scott, we have VW White Two has their hand raised and Donna Gregonis.
Go ahead, Scott.
That was a mistake. I'm sorry. You can move on.
No problem.
Okay, who's next? Maurice?
We we did have VW White. I don't know who that is.
Okay.
And then we also have Donna Gregonis.
My apologies. This is Valencia White, and I didn't have any questions about this presentation. I'm just going to open chat to the chairman. My apologies.
That's okay.
Good morning. Thank you. This is Donna Gregonis with Ohio City Incorporated and Tremont West Development Corporations and Neighborhood Development Director for both CDCs. So Wesley did come before the Economic Development Committee and the Block Club. And some things that they did bring up, I know Wes mentioned that the drawings don't reflect the accurate what regarding the parking. So I wanted to make sure that they will be removing the on-street parking as the community and the committee both did not want that. And there was also some concern regarding where the garbage collection would be and how that would look. So wanted to make sure focused on that. And then additionally, because the treatment of the dry concrete, at minimum, they were asking if there could be some maybe human scale pedestrian wayfinding along the way, or maybe pavers for pedestrians leading to the backhouses. So those are just some of the few comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is for schematic design, Commissioner Members?
Move approval incorporating the requests from the community organization.
Second. Okay, motion second, further discussion. Michael? Michael? Call the roll.
Sorry about that. My mouse wasn't moving where it wanted it to. Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is proposed demolition of a two-story mixed-use building, seeking final approval according to ordinance 341.08. This is at 2843 West 25th Street. Who's here for this place?
Katie McCoy. I'm one of the owners.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. Do you sound like swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead, Katie, and and try to make it brief.
Okay, yes, I'll I'll let you guys just, if you want to just scroll through the pictures while I'm talking, that's totally fine. Basically, we're seeking demolition of this building. And I just included some pictures for you guys to see that it's pretty rundown and inside and out is falling apart. We've gone through the Near West Design Review and gotten approval there. We've gotten letters of support from several council persons, Tremont West, Economic Development. So right now, we're just proposing to take this building down due to liability and just So right now, we're just proposing to take this building down due to liability and just being a giant eyesore. It's far past any sort of repair and has been vacant for years. And then we're just going to make a green space with the hopes of, at some point in the near future, building something there, but we don't really have a plan for that other than just green space right now.
Commission members?
Looks like we have Councilman Brian Cattelli with his hand raised.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to run my two cents in support of this demolition. I've been to this location. A little bit of disclosure, I am a full supporter of the animal hospital. They do amazing work and have made an amazing investment. And just going through this building, knowing how horrible condition it is and what it's attracting over that intersection, eliminating this nuisance condition for green space would be a positive.
Thank you, Cosman.
And I'm not sure if Donna Gregonis is commenting on this. Yes, okay. Wasn't sure if it was from before. Go ahead.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Donna Gregonis, again with Tremont West Development Corporation. So we are in support of this demolition and welcome it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission members, if you're not convinced by now. I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll.
Bowen?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
McRae Scott?
Yes.
Life?
Yes.
Motion carries. Northeast Design Review, proposed demolition of a one-story commercial building seeking final approval per three, four, one, point oh eight of Cleveland's codified ordinance. This is at seven, eight, eight, east one hundred and eighty-fifth street. Who's here for this one?
I am Valencia White, also our demolition compliance officer, Alex Abremelwitz.
Okay, go ahead, Valencia.
Okay, thank you all. I'm going to be as brief as possible because we'll be losing our conference room soon. So demolition. Say again?
Go ahead.
I said, go ahead.
Okay, so demolition is seeking the approval of this building. The current owner has had the property for over twenty-five years. And since October of nineteen ninety-five, has not tried to redeem the property or bring it out of condemnation. It has been condemned for over three years since October nineteenth and has been vacant since November two thousand and fifteen. The outstanding taxes on this property is five thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars. And Councilman Polenzic supports this demolition. Our site plan is to remove the land, I mean, to have the land cleared, graded and seeded with straw. Next two slides, please. Next, uh, next slide. Okay, so this is just the site location showing the street of east one hundred eighty-fifth and the different properties that are on east one hundred eighty-fifth. The red little indicator shows the actual property that we will be seeking approval for demolition. You can go to the next slide. This is the next closer view of the site and context. Next slide. So that's the front of the property on one hundred eighty-fifth. And then the bottom photo shows the garage that's in the back of this property. Next slide. That's another view of the back of the property. And the bottom photo shows the inside conditions of the garage. Next slide. These are interior photos of this structure. You can see that there is some water damage. Next slide. So the top view is a property located across the street. That address is seven, eight, five, two, ninety-one, east one hundred eighty-fifth street. It's owned by Dorothy Lewis. The center photo is located to the south of the proposed demolition structure. That address is seven, nine, zero, east one hundred eighty-fifth street. And the bottom photo is the northeast photo of the northeast property that's located next to our proposed demo.
All right, thank you. So it sounds like everyone takes care of their property except for this one. Obviously, there's no historic significance of the building. So commission members, what's your vote?
Said demolition.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Ray Scott?
Yes.
Life?
Yes.
Motion carries. Proposed demolition of a one-story commercial building seeking final approval per three, four, one, point oh eight of Cleveland's codified ordinance. This is located at seven, eight, six, east one hundred, one hundred and fifth street. Who's here for this one?
President here for this one. I'm Shanika Brown.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury.
I do.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, this here is the demolition of a building contacted by the, well, the homeowner purchased this building. He realized the condition that it was in, so we're looking to demolish the building and just plant grass there. He owns the building on the left side and the right side. It's a fifteen hundred square feet building. It was built in nineteen thirty, so it's ninety-one years old. But the roof has collapsed and section of the floors. This is a picture of the top of the roof. That is the front. Again, he owns the properties on the left and the right-hand side. That is the interior showing that what shape it is in, so we couldn't fix it up. And this is our plan to demolish it, just grow grass in the area of the building.
I move to approve demolition as stated.
We have Sharonda Watley with her hand raised?
Go ahead.
Hi, good morning. Just very quickly, Sharonda Watley, Cleveland City Planning. I'm the neighborhood planner for this area. So there was quite a bit of discussion about this demolition. There was some concern that this parcel would become additional parking for the automobile repair that is to the right of the subject or the left of the subject property. And so we wanted to make sure that this lot was simply graded and seeded. There is right now an informal gravel parking lot at the rear of the subject property. And so there was a condition to also pull up that gravel. So again, that this lot becomes a vacant, green, graded and seeded lot.
Okay, so August, you made the motion. Can you incorporate the lot behind it being seeded to graded and seeded?
Yes.
My initial motion to include the abatement of the rear lot as well.
Thank you. Motion second, further discussion. Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yeah.
Ray Scott?
Yes.
Life?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next is Kaiahoga T A Y apartment building, new construction, seeking schematic approval. This is at one, four, one, five, or not, yeah, one, four, one, five and one, four, three, zero, east forty-fifth street. Who's here for this?
Hi, I'm here. Ellen Curtin LaFleur from CHN Housing Partners, and Brian, our architect, is also here.
If you both could raise your right hand, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Wonderful. If you could move to the next slide, I'm going to give a quick introduction just to the development, the concept and the team of partners, and then Brian will review the overall design of the group here. So this building is referred to as Kaiahoga T A Y, which stands for Transition Age Youth. Here, we're specifically referring to young adults who are ages eighteen to twenty-four. So this is a supportive housing building designed to serve those young adults who are experiencing homelessness. It's an apartment building where all residents will be signing twelve-month leases. We understand that there is really a substantial need in our community for housing options like this for young adults. We know just in two thousand and twenty, based on the by-name list, there were five hundred and twelve young adults in Kaahuga County who are experiencing homelessness. So this is an opportunity to step in and meet that need. This development received an award of long-term housing tax credits from OFA this year, and we're also assembling the remaining financing. And we have voucher commitments from our local continuum of care as well as CMHA to allow us to provide flexible support to our residents to make the units completely affordable, no matter their situation. We have thirty-eight one-bedroom and twelve two-bedroom units. And the two-bedroom units are specifically designed and targeted so that we can support young adults who are parenting. We know again from the local by-name list and the data in our community that that's a need that needs to be met. The building will have onsite social services managed by Frontline and amenities to support the young adults' needs, interests and goals. We'll also have onsite property management and a twenty-four-seven staffed front desk to support our resident's safety and the community's safety. Next slide, please.
Well, can't come in here and park, but you can.
So just to give you an idea of the partners involved in this development, this is a team with a track record of success in supportive housing. You'll see CHN, Sisters of Charity Foundation, Eden, Frontline Enterprise have all worked together previously on the Housing First Initiative, which created seven hundred and eighty-two units of permanent supportive housing across eleven buildings in our community as part of an effort to eliminate long-term homelessness. In that effort, we've seen less than five percent of our Housing First residents return to homelessness, and it's led to an overall eighty percent reduction in long-term homelessness in our community. So we're really excited to take what was successful in the Housing First and adapt it to serve the needs of youth and young adults in our community. And to do that, we've also partnered with A Place For Me and the Reach Youth Action Board. And the Reach Youth Action Board is a group of young adults with lived experience who have really helped to guide us in a number of ways on this development, but particularly on site selection, design, you know, from the overall feel of the building down to small details that'll make it just as suitable and positive as possible for our residents. Next slide, please. And just to give a little more information of why the building is set up as it is and how it'll function, we're using the supportive model, which is person-centered. The individual has safe, stable and on-time limited housing. And then they have the opportunity to interact with property management and supportive service providers all on site. So the team is all really working together to make sure that those residents can meet their goals and get the services that they need to succeed. We know that supportive housing is a best practice for young adults, but this type of housing just really isn't available yet in our community for this group of residents. You know, these types of developments have been implemented successfully in Columbus and Cincinnati, and we've really learned from what they're doing there to implement here. Next slide, please. And just as I turn it over to Brian, I wanted to center us on kind of the core values of this development that's really guided everything we've done so far. And you can read them here, but I just want to flag two of them. The first one being youth leadership. Again, it's been so important to have the young adults contribute to every aspect of developing this building. Flexibility. We want to make sure that this is tailored and providing the best possible space for our residents. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian for the design.
Thanks, Ellen. What we're looking at here is obviously the site aerial. The project property parcels are located in span between East Forty-Fifth Street and East Forty-seventh Street. So it does have frontage on both, and it is between Superior and St. Clair Avenue. The items that I'd like to draw your attention to are the parcel in yellow to the south towards Superior. Those properties are primarily commercial and industrial manufacturing in nature, whereas the other surrounding properties to the east, west and north are primarily single-family. So we're looking at this site as kind of a buffer site in both use and position. Next slide, please. So this is, this is the parcel east Forty-seventh Street on the right and Forty-Fifth on the left. The building in white, you see it kind of zigzags and again, kind of working off of this transition or buffer parcel, we wanted the building also to buffer, buffer the single-family and properties from the manufacturing to the south. So the building itself kind of zigzags, trying to minimize the, the impact of the massing on the single-family homes to the north, as well as trying to keep, keep the building and apartments away from the the more commercial properties down below. What this also does and was directed by the Reach Youth Action Board was to also start to divide some of the onsite program elements. So there is a, a young children's playground, secured playground to the north. That's what the kind of yellow boxes tucked into the corner. And that, that location, that secured area for the younger kids to play is separated from the basketball court, the parking lot, the more commercial areas. We're also addressing the building closer and in an open fashion to the east, to East Forty-seventh Street. So the building is right up to the property setback. Whereas on East Forty-Fifth Street, that's more of kind of the public entrance, obviously with the parking lot. And there is a, there is an onsite resident garden for, obviously for the residents properly sited at the south end. Due to the at-risk nature of the, of the residents, we are securing the property. The dashed yellow-orange line around the, around the property is a six-foot-high fence. The design review comments that we received was with a fence, this, the criticism and concern is that it feels isolated from the, from the neighborhood. It feels separate, whereas our intention is to make it feel part of the neighborhood. So we are trying to minimize the impact of the fence on East Forty-seventh Street. Again, kind of our, our understanding of the residential side of the building are the property. We do want to provide some privacy for those adjacent parcels, so the, the, there would be a privacy fence on both the north and south property lines. And then on the east Forty-Fifth Street property line, we want to take that, 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 that fence, which would be an open decorative metal fence, and set it back behind the landscape buffer to try to, try to hide it and really present, present the face of the parcel as, as the landscaping, something nice with some signage. The building would obviously be, be visible through that. One item that we've, we are following up on, and I've had a lot of discussion on, is the amount of parking. Typically with permanent supportive housing, we find residents do not have cars. In this case, we've done some due diligence investigation, as Ellen said, with transition age youth developments in Cincinnati and Columbus and found they actually, they do have cars in addition to the staff who, who are on-site twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The, the residents do, do need parking. So we, we don't want to overburden the surrounding neighborhood with, with too few parking spaces and residents parking on the street. So that, that has been, I think, fully vetted, and we feel that this is a proper number of parking spaces. So just the, the building layout, just for reference, off of, again, off of East Forty-seventh Street, cars would pass through a boulevard, controlled access boulevard entry. And straight in to the left, the, the southeast corner of the building is, is the primary entrance with common spaces generally located on the, the left or west side of the building. Whereas the residential apartments are toward the, towards East Forty-seventh Street with the two-bedroom family units all being on East Forty-seventh Streets. Our intention is to fully landscape the parcel. And what you might see, say, on East Forty-seventh Street are the trees are not in the tree lawn. Our, our assumption initially is to try to match the context of the street. Unfortunately, all the trees in the tree lawn on East Forty-seventh Street have been pretty severely cut back by the low-hanging power lines. So we, we don't want that to happen with these trees. So we, we still want to landscape the front of the building, but we've, we've pulled them back onto the property to try to avoid that, that happening here. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the images of all of the landscape materials. There was one comment from Design Review on a shrub, which we have changed out. It was a rose of Sharon, so we've, we've replaced that, but otherwise. But otherwise, low-maintenance plantings. We can discuss property management if you'd like, although the representative had to step off from Eden. But they take great care in caring for the sites, keeping them clean and managed and being a good neighbor. So, next slide, please. So this is an updated elevation from the Design Review elevations that we sent out. This is the east elevation, so fronting along East Forty-seventh Street. The building construction, for reference, is all load-bearing masonry, so this is not a veneer. We have one primary material on the building. And with that and with all of the residential units along this facade, we wanted to try to provide some variation in the elevation, obviously, but also kind of allude to some residential features that you normally see in residential construction. So we have this vertical element intending to allude to a brick chimney. We've also revised the window opening sizes to be more of a residential nature, adding some mullion divisions. And maintaining a sloped roof across the entire building. Next slide, please. These are the previous elevations, and at this scale, it's hard to see the differences. But I think in refining the elevations, the fenestration and window opening sizes at a larger scale and in person, it would be much more evident that this is a residential building because of the sizes of the windows and the detailing around the building. So previously, we had a flat roof portion of the building, which I think really came out in the Design Review that it becomes very commercial. And so we've moved to a sloped roof, trying to, again, fit into the context of the more residential neighborhood. Certainly, as asking for schematic approval, we feel that there is further refinement to be done prior to submitting to Design Review. But this east elevation is the concept elevation that we're basing the rest of that design off of. And we were looking for schematic approval.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. David had to jump off at eleven-thirty, so I'll be sharing now. So I'm going to ask if any commission members have questions or comments. This is for schematic approval, so thank you for sharing the changes to this point as well. So commission members?
I move approval, Downing.
We have a motion and a second. Can you call the roll, please?
Downing.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Yes.
We're going to have to move very quickly so we don't lose a forum, so I'm going to ask for the demolitions. You go extremely quickly, just give us the highlights, so we do not lose a forum at noon. Please, this one is the proposed demolition of a two-story commercial building, two-zero-two-one-dash-zero, I think, one-nine. Okay, who's here to present for this? If you go back, Maurice, who is someone here to present this one?
Anthony Lassiter.
Anthony. Okay, Shraddha, are you presenting or are they presenting?
Mr. Lassiter should be presenting, but if he is not here, I can give the committee some comments, or we can table it for the next meeting.
If he's not here, we're going to table it. Is he here?
I move the table.
A motion to table?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, please call the roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
This is EC two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-one-seven. This is at one-nine-nine-zero Ford Avenue. These are community building now leasing banners. I'm going to have to swear, if Mark, you're the only one presenting on the signs, and ask that you move through quickly, this is conceptual. Is Mark the, Mark Balen?
I'm here.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, as usual, and answer to penalty of perjury?
Yeah, Mark Balen, I do. The project involves a banner as presented here. Went through the Euclid Corridor review with some changes. We are going to be moving the graphic that's up there, moving it underneath the live the website in now leasing. We're going to be shrinking that all down a little bit. So that was the changes that they gave as a conditional approval, and we are now here before you.
Okay. I'm going to ask, go ahead.
We had Kim Scott with her hand raised.
Okay, just one second, but I'll let Kim go, but I'm going to ask, you know, this is conceptual approval? Is that, I'm asking to staff this question?
I think they want final approval. There were two conditions. And the first condition that Mark mentioned was to move the graphic down to the lower portion of the banner. The second condition was to align the web address with the now leasing to make it, yeah. So this would be for final approval, though.
Okay. Commission members? Move approval, Downing. Your motion, do we have a second? With the conditions?
With conditions.
Do you have a second, anyone?
Madam Chair must recuse.
Okay, that's August. So we have a motion, and it does not seem we have a second unless. Okay, Councilman's like, second, can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Okay. Now we have Downtown Flats Design Review, two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-zero-nine, John, St. John's Cathedral Monument Sign. I think we have Terry Fields first present. I need to swear in. Wait, can you go back? Do we need to remove this from the table?
Moved.
Oh, no. Madam Chair, it was just under a certain condition.
Okay. So we don't need to remove it. Can I swear you in?
Yes, please.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, as usual, answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay.
So you guys have seen this before already. It was a slightly smaller version of it. The original screen at this monument sign, the digital screen, was a three-by-five. But the biases determined after doing a mock-up of it that they wanted to go a size larger, to a five-by-seven digital screen. And you could see the drawings for that enlargement. It didn't really change the overall feel, but it did obviously increase the scale of the sign. On page two are the hard-line drawings, and page three shows the renderings of the enlarged sign in context.
Okay. So you're here just requesting the approval for the increased signage sign?
That's correct.
Lillian, as I recall, when this had come up previously, I was, was staffs going to go back and kind of come up with like a downtown-wide policy? I recall there being a question of was this the beginning, setting a precedent for kind of digital signage in the downtown district? Is that, does that ring a bell for anyone?
Yeah, it was less about that. It was that, but it was also about what was going to be shown on it. So there was going to be live streaming of services on it, like real time. And I think there was a sense of sort of research about that, so I don't know if that was resolved, Freddie. That's what I thought. I thought we had actually tabled it, but I'm confused.
Quite frankly, so am I, but it's something that we probably could go back and look at. I don't recall specifically necessarily agreeing to some type of analysis. And Mike, we might have to go back to our previous commission meetings just to see what we committed to. I don't recall that, but I don't think it'll be a problem to think that through. You do know we are looking at the sign code in general for citywide, and digital signs are part of that. But I don't recall commissioners any commitment about looking at this downtown. So we'll look back, and if there has been, we will deal with it, yes.
Director Collier, I'm sorry, and also Madam Chair.
Mike, can you speak up a little bit?
Sure. On the final agenda that I sent out?
Yes.
It does clearly indicate that it was approved with the condition that the staff come up with a policy for live streaming of events for digital signs. So it was actually approved with that condition. Now they've come back with a bigger screen, but I assume the conditions would still hold, so that's what's in front of you today. It was not tabled.
We have Anthony Santora with his hand raised, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So as Michael just stated, that this project was approved with the condition. The condition that was put upon it at the previous meeting actually was for the commission to look at it, but it had a, I believe it was sixty-day time limit before implementation. And there was discussions about whether or not that was enough time to begin going through the process and coming up with something for the entire downtown area. And we are working through it currently and having the discussions, as Director Collier stated, and something that we can definitely continue to work forward. But it was approved with that condition beforehand, not tabled.
And do you have, is there a rendering of the sign size we approved and what the new sign is here? I just, I'm.
Doesn't appear to be. Roughly, how much larger is this one?
It grew in about two feet in the horizontal, and it grew by a little less than two feet in the vertical. So if you look at the, you know, to elaborate, if you look at the existing, I mean, the sheet burst MS dash two, the second sheet, previously that eight-foot-four dimension on detail one, I believe was six feet four.
Okay.
Or six feet eight, actually, yeah.
Does this exceed? Does this exceed the sign code, the sign, does this exceed, I guess, to staff? Does this exceed the sign ordinance?
Anthony Santora.
Yes, Madam Chair. So it does technically exceed the sign ordinance requirements, and it also is a digital display board. However, the current zoning code allows for variance either greater or less strict than what is allowable based on city commission approval, which is why it's being presented to you today.
It's your preference.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to table. I just would like, it's not the sign in particular, it's the what signage is going to be downtown, and I'd just like more on that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can you call the roll?
Downing.
Yes.
Luker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I think it would be best for staff to come back with this, I think. So if the applicant would like to have this increased sign, they do need to work with the city on this, and also know that until the live streaming is resolved, I think, you know, the original motion still carries, but, you know, that was not approved. There was a condition on that. The Downtown Flats Design Review, two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-one-eight, the Apollo Apartments renovation. This is at twelve-fifty Riverbed, Kyle Drives Wells. Or for conceptual approval?
This is for schematic approval. Kevin Drives Wells.
Kevin, I need to swear you in. Anyone else speaking with you?
We have Michael App, the project developer, and Ron Tanabom is also here from our office.
Do you all swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so you shall answer to penalty of perjury?
Drives Wells, I do.
Ron Tanabom, I do.
Okay. In the interest of time, if you could move pretty quickly, and this is schematic approval, just so we can get a sense and give you some direction, that would be helpful, please.
Certainly will, certainly will.
Excuse me, pardon me, this is Terry Fields of Ruddy. I don't mean to be rude, but I'm not quite sure what happened there. You guys kind of rushed through that. You tabled something. Like I said, I don't mean to be rude, but can you indicate to me what you determined?
Can you please work with staff? They'll work with you on that after the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are twelve-fifty Riverbed. This is the two existing, or one existing building with a four-story and a six-story portion built around nineteen-nineteen, next to the Superior Viaduct. Next slide, this is formerly known as the Left Bank Building. The building is currently vacant at a nightclub on the ground floor and some unpermitted residential uses above. Next slide. We are, next slide, we are proposing seventy residential units. We are seeking schematic approval only for the building itself. There are some views here that show some potential site improvements under the viaduct, some on-street parking, but that's still being worked out and negotiated, so we want to focus on the building today. Next slide. So this is intended to be really almost entirely small-scale, one-bedroom efficiency-type residential units. New entry proposed there on the right side at the north end of the building at the lobby. And then, next slide, upper floors residential entirely. Next slide, on the roof, the fourth floor, a roof deck that would be down below the level of the viaduct with a stair connection to that. And then next slide, finally, on the upper floor, the leasing office, which has a small connection to the viaduct. That connection exists, but would need to be removed and replaced essentially in kind because of the level of deterioration of that. Next slide, so proposing essentially restoration of the exterior. We're trying to maintain the look of those existing windows. Next slide. Primary design elements that we're adding is new windows on the ground floor and a new entry canopy and blade sign and reopening some old openings to provide the entrance to the lobby there on the right. Next slide. Next slide. So new openings are being added to the viaduct side of the building. That's going to require some code issues to be worked out, but we've come up with the building department and have their comments, and we believe we have to move forward on that. You can see leasing office on the upper floor, and then finally, next slide, another view of the proposed blade sign. We do recognize that the blade sign is larger than the sign ordinance and the zoning code would allow. But next slide, do you think that that's necessary? This is at the end of a kind of a long dead end street and can sort of, one more image, we have a total montage that shows what that blade sign would look like in front of the Jackknife Bridge. We think that's, uh, helpful for wayfinding for the project. So. Happy to go back and answer detail. That's the sweet presentation, but appreciate your time.
Thank you. Uh, commission members?
Move approval Downing.
Second Luca.
Um, we have a motion and a second. This is schematic approval. Um, so, uh, we'll, uh, see if there are any other comments or discussion. I'd just like to say it's a wonderful project. A beautiful building. And, um, I think, um, my perspective, since we're giving schematic approvals, that the blade sign is actually quite wonderful. So.
Madam Chair, we have, um, Director Collier and Anthony Santora with their hand raised.
Sure.
Yeah, two things real quick about this project. Um, and given the fact that we've, uh, just recently adopted the Vision for the Valley Initiative. It's, uh, investments like this that are really opportunistic with respect to rehabbing what's there. Um, also the way this is situated, um, um, is, is a real positive because you still have the open space along the river's edge, which is great. Um, it would be ideal if this, uh, river's edge could be enhanced, um, uh, somehow as, uh, connected to this development. So that's something that's obviously, uh, needs to be discussed. Um, it could be implemented, uh, in the near future. Not to mention, um, the viaduct itself, which I think is going to be a critical piece of the puzzle, uh, with respect to the connectivity to Nautica and other areas of this peninsula. One of the key things that we talked about with Vision for the Valley is really trying to connect the dots down here, because once you're down in the flats, it always seems like there's these rooms or these pieces and parts of things. And I think, uh, to the degree that we can fill in like this adaptively reuse, but also make those connections explicit. I think that you'll start to feel a more connected cohesive environment in the River Valley. So thanks for, uh, this investment because I think it's critical.
Okay. Um, any other comments or we should probably move? We have seven minutes. So let's keep going.
Move to approve as presented.
We had, there was a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I get lost. You guys are losing me. Hurry up.
We have a motion and a second already. Uh, can we call the roll, please?
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Uh, this is another downtown flats design review demolition of a one story building two zero two one dash zero one nine. Uh, this is at fourteen, one, four, three, one Chester Avenue. Tom Einhaus from Playhouse Square. Tom, are you still on?
I'm still on. I have with me Lexi Bowman of Bowman or, uh, B and B Wrecking.
Okay. Do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, moving quickly through it. Um, with all due respect to historic character of this building, um, I checked with the, um, landmarks commission. They don't have jurisdiction in this area, but they confirm that it is not a contributing piece of property. Um, the history is, is kind of bleak and the condition currently is very bleak. Um, it sits directly next to the Greyhound station, um, kind of nestled in between a parking lot, a surface parking lot. There is the building. Uh, one story brick building. Um, the site is painted and, and brick. The, um, front facade is nondescript. If you could continue, please. Next slide. Uh, there's the front. Next slide. And there's the side, the curb that, um, can be seen. If you could go back, there's a small curb at the bottom of the building that would be retained as well as at the back of the building. And you'll see on a site plan that there is a fence that is part of the Greyhound site. Um, this is the west side of the building. That would be totally removed and the fence that's in place there would be totally removed.
And it will just be, uh, seated and graded?
Um, so looking at the site plan real quick, we'll go back twenty feet with grass. We'll have compacted gravel back to the footprint of the building. And then the site behind the building will be uncompacted gravel. The large tree that is there will remain. The Greyhound fence will remain and we will install, um, the curb, uh, uh, parking curbs to prevent parking on the space. So that's some green space, gravel, large tree, compacted gravel. And we think it'll soften it for the neighborhood, but it'll also not become a, a hangout, which many of the areas in Long Chester have become.
Okay, questions, commission members?
Move approval.
We have a motion Charles and a second August. Uh, any other comments? Um, okay, uh, call roll.
Downing.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Ray Scott.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I must recuse myself from this project.
Okay. Uh, thank you, August. Um, this is, um, uh, I don't see the, I know the project. It's the nine two five Euclid Avenue. Um, Centennial redevelopment. This is seeking final approval. I'm going to, um, uh, ask if Diane is still here.
I am, Madam Chair.
I'm going to ask if you can take over as the chair. I'm going to stay as long as possible to try to vote, um, because, um, I do need to leave. But if you don't mind, if you could take over, uh, and share this last item.
That's fine. Um, who's here to present?
Karen Borland. Karen Borland from Sandman Architect.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Um, maybe I'll swear them in real quick. Do you swear?
I'm sorry, this is responsible too with the millennia. I may need to say something. You can swear me in.
Sure. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer to the penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Okay. It's yours, Diane.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Um, so thank you all for your time this morning. Uh, again, this is the, the Centennial Project. This is the rehabilitation of the historic Union Trust Company, Union Commerce Bank Huntington Bank Building. Uh, it sits at the northeast corner of East Ninth and Euclid Avenue. Um, this is a one point four million square foot building complex, uh, that includes two large bank halls ringed by offices, uh, plus large towers of office space. Uh, this is a site plan in here. You see the main block of the building. Euclid would be to the bottom of the page. East Ninth along the left side, Chester at the top. You see the alley. East eleventh place, which separates the main block of the building from the annex building, which is a five story, uh, portion of the building, part of the original construction, but uh, separated by that alley. Next slide. These are just some context photos. Uh, I'm sure many of you are, are familiar with this building. Um, you see on the left here, the Euclid frontage and then continuing up East Ninth. It's the shortest frontage is actually on Euclid. Um, and then on the right, you see the longest frontage, which is along Chester Avenue. And then at the, the, the left side of that image, you see the annex, the five story portion uh, at the, the east end. Next slide. There are just some, uh, more pedestrian level views of the building. Um, you see the, the ground, the, the base level columnades, which continue around the street facing elevations, although, uh, toned down a bit on the Chester side. Um, next slide. Uh, on the left, you see the Chester elevation, including the annex and the foreground. On the right is a, one of the typical light wells. There are two large light wells. Uh, one each, one above each bank hall that extend, uh, the windows begin at the sixth floor up to the twentieth floor. These are secondary elevations, just, uh, common brick elevations on the backside of the building. There's very limited site area associated with the property behind the annex, but otherwise, uh, it's abutted by neighboring properties on all sides. Um, next slide. Historically, this was, uh, the Union Trust Company Bank originally. Uh, so planning for this started in nineteen twenty one. A hundred years ago, when, um, this is where the name of Centennial came from. Um, so it was completed in nineteen twenty four. It's a Graham Anderson Probst and White design. Uh, really a, a remarkable landmark in the city. Uh, the interior bank halls are particularly significant historically and architecturally. Uh, but the exterior of the building is, is also very stately and, and has really experienced relatively few alterations since its original construction. Next slide. Uh, so you see here a, a rendering of, of the completed proposed project. Um, and you'll note that it looks very much like it does today. Uh, the lion's share of work that's being proposed here on the exterior is going to be uh, repair and in kind replacement of existing historic materials. This is a historic tax credit project, so we will also be subject to reviews by the state historic preservation office and the National Park Service. Um, it was constructed in nineteen twenty four, as I mentioned, just over one point four million square feet of quite a massive building. Uh, the proposed project is roughly four hundred and fifty million in development cost. And the main block of the building, so from floors four all the way up to the twentieth floor will be converted to residential use. It will house eight hundred and sixty eight workforce affordable housing units. So a hundred percent of these units are income restricted, uh, to an average of sixty percent AMI. So really showing a a very significant need in downtown Cleveland for affordable housing. There is also in the banks ringing the bank hall levels, uh, on the first through third floors. There are offices that were historically offices that overlooked the bank halls. Those will re, uh, remain in office use. There's also some office space in the annex building. The bank halls themselves, um, which are quite stunning, will be rehabilitated and converted with the, the smaller bank hall, which runs along East Ninth Street, will be converted to a restaurant. Um, and then the larger bank hall following the Chester side, uh, will be converted to a museum and event space called the Cleveland Exposition that's being planned in coordination with, uh, the Western Reserve Historical Society. So really fantastic, uh, public uses for these very significant spaces. Um, and I know we're all excited to reopen this building to the public and have people be able to, to experience the, the, the real majesty of this building again. Um, there is no parking associated with the building. There is a garage across the street that's connected by a tunnel, uh, but it's not owned by the current property owner. So, um, there is parking available there, but no, no dedicated parking. Just running quickly through the floor plans, um, the lower levels are largely going to remain in their historic use. The this is the ground floor, which is partially below grade. There's a retail arcade in that level, which will remain in retail space. Uh, some space along the, the west end is being reused for, uh, building management offices, residential mailroom leasing. Uh, and then there's some back house service space as well on this floor. Next slide. The first floor is the, the main bank hall level. Uh, so you see at the top left, the entrances off of East Ninth and Chester, which lead into the rotunda that feed into the two bank halls. There's a separate entrance off of Euclid that leads to, uh, a large corridor where all the main elevator banks are serving the upper floor. So that is where the, the main residential entry will be. All the residential elevators are in that main bank. Uh, that will also serve the twenty first floor, which, uh, I forgot to mention previously, but that's the former midday club, which will remain in use as an event space. Uh, the next two slides will show the second and third floors, which again are just really continuing their existing use, office use ringing around the bank halls and open into the central atrium. When we get up to the fourth floor is when the residential housing begins on floors four and five. Uh, the light well, there are, uh, that's below the light wells. So there's no windows on the interior side. So those will just have apartments around the street facing elevations with residential storage in the center areas. The fifth floor has the main residential amenity spaces which are, uh, large and, and significant, um, to support this number of housing units. Next slide, as we kind of go up the, the building again.
Sorry to interrupt you. Um, just because, um, I don't want you to lose your quorum in your final approval because I'm the link to your final approval. Um, can you focus primarily on the exterior, any signage or anything, since this is final approval? Otherwise.
You can go to the next, yeah. Um, so yeah, to summarize the exterior and if you could go to the next slide and one more. Um, really, the, uh, all that we're seeking approval for, final approval for today is repair, restoration of the existing historic building. Um, everything I think would qualify as repair or in kind replacement. Again, all matching the existing appearance. Um, we will be replacing some storefronts. Um, there's significant masonry work. We're replacing all windows which were previously replaced. But really all just in kind replacement. The only significant new work, which would include signage and lighting and also a proposed new freestanding canopy at the East Ninth entrance are all, uh, included in this presentation, but just for information and no action being requested. So there are, you know, I think about thirty more slides here showing details of the existing conditions and what our proposed repairs are. I don't know if that's, should we, do we need to, to go through all of that or maybe just quickly?
Commission members?
And my sense is that, um, you should get the approval for the cleaning and the restoration and you're coming back anyway with any of the, um, other, the elements that are not here today for approval, correct? We're not doing consent approval on those today, are we?
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and these, these, these improvements are, uh, since it's a historic project, there's a little bit of regulation to what they are, right? So it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a pass fail, right?
Correct, yes. Yeah, we, I mean, I'd love to tell you more about it, but, uh, it's a great project and, and we're excited to, to really, you know, I think it's going to be a, a major improvement. There are some significant issues here, but yes, the building is going to look very much like it does today.
Hey, does anybody want to make a motion? Cause I can't.
Um, move approval.
A second.
Okay, Michael has left, so I don't know who is calling the roll.
I will call the roll. Downing.
Yes.
Uh, Curry.
Yeah.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Paul. I'm sorry, Slife.
Yes.
All right. And Bowen is gone.
By the way, it's amazing project. So can't wait for Cleveland. And I, I hope that you will come back when there's a little more time on the agenda and we can see some of the additions to the canopies and signage. When we approve them, I hope there's time on the agenda because I'm, as I can see, they're extraordinary. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, we have three public art projects that haven't been heard.
Okay. Can we go back to them? I think we still have a quorum, right? Freddie with four of us here?
Uh, yes, we do.
Thank you. Can we switch back to that?
Yep, we're trying to do that now.
Great, thank you.
I'll go ahead and, and introduce the first project while we're going back. Um, this first project, the quality. I'm sorry. Um, the first project, the equality mural at Kamal's tires is actually, um, a retro act of approval that we're requesting. This mural was installed, uh, last year in response to the, uh, George Floyd, uh, protest. And, um, it was brought to our attention by the member of, um, the Northwest Design Review. Um, they did see it on July fourteenth and it was approved with one condition. And that condition was that the storefront frame, um, be painted back into the mural so they could better define, uh, the storefront. Um, I do support this project. I think it's a wonderful project. I'm on the fence about the condition that was provided by the Northwest Design Review. Um, when I first saw it on a smaller screen, it didn't seem like repainting the storefront disrupted the art very much, but then looking at. But then looking at it when I got back to my office on a larger screen, I feel like it does disrupt some of the important artistic elements. But I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Susan Underwood from Metro West Development Corporation to go through the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara. Yeah, I'll just kind of run through this real quick. So, this was a mural done by Raphael Valdivieso on Kamal's Tires. You can see the blank storefront that's been boarded up for some time, and they had no desire to do a window storefront, though they have been pushed to do that because of crime in the area. And they have an entrance on the side of the building. So, they do not use the front of the building and wanted instead to, creative work of art that spread a message of equality to the neighborhood, inspired by the Black Lives Matter movement. And Giselle, the owner of Kamal and her husband, the owners of the tire shop, they are all from Lebanon. And so, they were just inspired, you know, in, they're kind of in that area that's called International Village and wanted to reach out and send that message. So, just some images you can pop through of Building Hope in the City funded this project. So, they do this Rally CLE program, which $2,000 grants that fund anything in the neighborhood that can be beneficial to the community and then can include the community on these Rally CLE days, which this year it's September 11th. So, it's always around that date every year. They have, you know, a block party and community cleanups, murals, all that kind of thing. So, this was just one Rally CLE project that Building Hope in the City funded. And then Kamal's Tires was the owner and Raphael Valdivieso is the artist. So, as you can see, this is the finished project. And as Tara said, the Design Review, Near West Design Review Committee, their recommendation was to paint all of the kind of the borders of the windows, which I don't know if that, is that in this presentation, that proposed change?
It should be at the very end, Susan.
See, I thought Matt added it into it. Yeah, there's the proposed change. So, after the Near West Design Review, I took this back to Giselle, the owner's daughter, Raphael, the artist, and Anthony Giambroni from Building Hope in the City. They were the three people on the project. And they all felt that it was overly disruptive of the artwork. And their proposal, they would like to only paint the outside border, if that is possible. So, that is the request of the building owner, the artist, and Building Hope in the City, the funder, is to, they felt like this proposal is just, especially, you know, with the sunshine and with some of the text, they felt like it was more important to preserve the message and the artwork than to make it look like a storefront, which I personally agree with. I understand the, why this proposal was come to, this compromise. But that is what we are requesting then, is to paint the border of the mural. And the owner also did say that she is planning, they're doing some other renovations to the building. They're doing some power washing and doing some things to the windows up top to kind of frame those out soon. So, just kind of keeping that in mind and that they are a 30-year-old business that has been, you know, a stable in business in the community and won't be going anywhere anytime soon.
Great, thank you. Commission members? Questions?
I personally believe it's fine as painted. I don't think we should have discourse about art and what it looks like, in my opinion. So, I would, I would rather move to approve as it was painted and not at the border.
Great.
A second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Call the roll, please. Who's going to call the roll? Freddie?
Hold on. Downey?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
Curry?
She's gone.
She's gone. McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sly?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, if I understand correctly, they don't have to do the border. They can leave it as is?
That's correct.
Good, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you all, and thank you for your help, Tara. And I'll make sure that future murals get approved ahead of time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another one. Special presentation, Northeast 2021-022 Wordsmith mural at Five Points Community Center. Seeking final approval, project address 813 East 152nd Street. Presenters, Rachel Pollak, Graffiti Hart, Allison Henni. And it moved too fast, so I didn't get the third name, no. Just.
I believe it's just Rachel presenting on behalf of Graffiti Hart today. So, this is another one of many that you've seen by the artist Wordsmith, who does typography and has his vintage typewriter iconic symbol in his murals. This was approved at Northeast Design Review on July 6th. There are several of these around the city. This one happens to be in Ward Eight in the Collinwood neighborhood. And before I turn it over to Rachel to do the presentation, I was contacted by Councilman Polenzic, whose ward this is in, and he did ask that I read this into the record. He said, "I support the mural project. The depiction is historic and timely. The Gatewoods are trying to re-energize the northern end of East 185th Street. We need uplifting murals and ones that promote positive images and developments in our society. Therefore, I support their efforts and the mural." So, that was his, I'm sorry, that's not even for this mural. I apologize. That's for the next presentation, my bad. I support this mural, though. I'm going to turn it over to Rachel.
Okay, thank you. Rachel?
Hi, guys. Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
And I apologize in advance for my dog panting on the side. We had to rearrange our vet appointment this morning. But I, like we said, you guys have seen a few of these pieces so far. I went over to the first installation this morning, and it's going up beautifully. Really, really excited about this project. This aspire to inspire on the left-hand side is actually the mock-up of what's going to go in at the Greater Collinwood Community Center, there at the Five Point Community Center. You can go to the next slide. I think we're just seeking final approval for this. We do have community support. And we also have developed like an event for this particular installation, where we're providing free lunch for the community and for the community members to come out and be engaged and see what we're doing there for them. So, keep scrolling through the presentation. It's like we said, you guys have seen quite a bit. This is just the mock-up of where it's going in. And, yep, that's the mock-up of what it will look like. 25 foot, and that'll be going in, I think, August 10th, if I'm not mistaken. And yeah, that's it. We also have somebody on with Greater Collinwood, Jamie Baker, who has a couple of words that she wants to jump on here as well.
Thanks for hearing from us today. I'm Jamie Baker, Assistant Director of Greater Collinwood. And we are thrilled about this project and very excited. Councilman Hairston, whose ward this is in, is not with us, but he's in full support as well.
Great. Commission members?
I move to approve.
Great. Second, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Freddie, can you call?
Downey?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Another special presentation. Persist mural at Gateway Home/Share, seeking final approval. Project address, 532 East 185th Street. Project representatives, Marlene Gatewood Allen, the property owner, and Linda Zolton Wood, the artist. Tara, are you going to begin?
Yes, this is the one that I just embarrassingly read the councilman's support of on the last mural. This mural is on the north end of Collinwood. And the Gatewoods have worked with this artist and the community collaboratively to come up with something very special and meaningful for the neighborhood and adding some vibrancy to a section of 185th that doesn't have a lot of activity or anything to draw you in. So, I don't know if you all want me to reread the councilman's support, but Mike Polenzic did read it. It's on the record, just on the wrong item, but if I need to reread it, I can.
I don't think you need to.
Okay. Then I'll.
Go ahead.
I'll turn it over to Marlene Gatewood. She's the owner of the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity. We at the Gateway Home Share recently purchased the building. And what we want to do is work with Linda Zolton, our neighborhood artist, to put a persist mural on our south wall. As you can see, we're surrounded by asphalt, no color. And we wanted to brighten the space up and also send a positive message to everyone that actually sees it. The two pictures here will show, this is from Rose Cliff on the right, where you can see the south wall. There's a vacant business there behind that. And then the picture on the left is from the sidewalk on East 185th, where you would be able to see the mural walking from that way. Most of the parcels around us are vacant, and we just want to brighten up the neighborhood. And I'll turn it over to Linda Zolton, our artist.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Linda Zolton Wood, and I received a grant from Citizens Bank for Community Champion Award to pay for this mural. And we selected this site because the Gatewoods are so thoroughly involved in reaching out to the community. So, we selected, Ms. Gatewood selected Ruby Bridges and Kamala Harris as inspiration for the direction that we hope to see the neighborhood take. And we've included schoolchildren from grades three through eight to help design the triangular textured color blocks. So, we will have a tone-on-tone, very subtle within those triangular shapes. Their hopes for the future for their neighborhood, especially behind Kamala Harris. There will be more subtle, if you advance the slides, there will be persist. And it will be a more subtle typeface with a color that will match their clothing. So, not a shocking white as the, as this photo represents. And it will be a little smaller. The message would be uplifting for the neighborhood. And as we have found, I've done a mural for Gargano's Pizza on West 25th. As the children help paint and design the mural, they take ownership and they will help protect the property if they are felt, listened to and seen.
Great. And Tara put a comment in the chat that this mural was approved by Northeast Design Review on August 3rd.
Just to note that it will be painted to the edges. And then on the left-hand side would be a gray that will match the rest of the building when it's painted in the following year.
Great. Questions from the commission? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A second?
A second.
Great. Freddie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Downey?
Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have a director's report today?
Very briefly, two items that I want to highlight. One, just thanking all of the commission members for the very successful two hybrid meetings that we conducted. They were a production to put on, but they worked beautifully. So, just want to thank everyone for their commitment to that. With respect to Form Based Zoning, I wanted to give everyone an update that we have a draft product. So, we are going to be having an internal presentation with our consultants. We're going to have a invitation to the chair and vice chair of the commission prior to a planning presentation for the commission to just review the draft. So, this will just be just reviewing the product and getting an understanding of what the product states in the three geographies that we're focused on. Obviously, this is a long time coming. Working through COVID obviously was a challenge, so we had to extend contracts and things of that nature. But we're at a point where we have a draft of that product for review. So, that's some really good news. And then that meeting is going to be held on the 16th, where we're going to be inviting the chair and co-chair and then doing a follow-up with other commission members due to the fact that we have certain requirements that we have to adhere to. And the other thing that's coming up is we're going to have a in-person meeting out in the community for the Midtown Master Plan Update. So, it'll be another hybrid meeting. And one of the reasons why we want to continue to do these things is because we want to show the community how government works and being out there, inviting community members to these planning presentations that they participated in, and them understanding how those plans are used and how we adopt and we make decisions based on those community initiatives is important. So, that's all I have for today, and I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment to Freddie and all of the planning staff on that hybrid meeting. It ran, I was apprehensive and had reservations, but it ran wonderfully smooth and it was productive. So, thanks, guys. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments or concerns? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
And a second?
A second.
All right. I don't know, do we call the roll on that, Freddie?
Let's just be thorough.
Yeah. Yes.
Lucker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
And Sly?
Yes.
All right, thank you all.
Great, thank you.
Fred, I got to say, I think you got to be careful of August. He's challenging you for best dress today.
Yeah.
Pretty fancy jacket he's got on there.
Great, have a good weekend, everyone. Thank you.